Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant, located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Thank you, I see the recording on. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the March 22, 2021 meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. I am going to conduct this meeting remotely as we have been doing during the pandemic, and just a reminder that that is in accordance with the Governor's orders, and then individuals can participate both in real time by joining this Zoom meeting and participating via the chat function, or by emailing questions, concerns, comments to any member of the Board in advance, and we can read those into the public record for you. You can find the Zoom link at the Falmouth Select Board website when you go to the Town website on our page, so you can go ahead there and have the instructions to join us. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please note that you are present when I call your name, please. Doug Brown?
Here.
Nancy Taylor?
Taylor here.
Sam Patterson?
Patterson here.
Okay, Megan English-Braga present. We are also joined by Town Manager Julian Susso, and we are going to actually adjourn to executive session for two matters. The first is under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss participation by the DPW Water Division in a multi-district municipal litigation regarding PFAS, and also under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to discuss town manager employment agreement. And as Chair, I state that not to enter into executive session could prejudice the Town going forward on either one of these matters. So that is a motion to adjourn to executive session. Do I have a second?
Patterson.
Second that. And could I just comment that, in case people don't know, the PFAS is for chlorine or emerging contaminants that may be affecting our groundwater.
Yes, thank you. So I have a motion and a second by, and then just a reminder that we will return when our business is conducted in our executive session. We anticipate it'll be near 7 o'clock, but we'll return as soon as we're done with that business. So by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Great, thank you. We're gonna get started. Okay, welcome back. This again is the March 22, 2021 Falmouth Select Board meeting. We have just returned from executive session, and we are now back in open session. I have actually already called the meeting to order, and I would ask you to please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Hey, under recognition, I just wanted to start out by just asking, you know, for us to just reflect for a moment on the tragedy in Atlanta, on the loss of life there, and particularly impact that it's had on Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, which, you know, this really was a horrific crime. And just a reminder, you know, I know there has been a lot of discussion to how it was portrayed in the news, and I hope that we do a better job when we talk about these incidents than to characterize what took place as happening because an individual had a bad day. Everyone has bad days. That does not in any way justify the taking of all of these innocent lives, and I hope that folks really just continue to hold those families in our hearts and to think about the ways in which we talk about these events that really paints them in the correct light and doesn't, you know, I think, really doesn't downplay what took place, because it may be taking place in a community that doesn't look just like ours. And so I just wanted to reflect on that, and it really is something that I know has just been appropriately a cause for reflection and concern, and so we want to make sure that as a community, we are just standing in solidarity with those in Atlanta and with folks in our own community for whom this touches them in a particular way because of their own, you know, cultural background or experiences. So just on my mind tonight. Sam?
Yeah, if I could just piggyback on that a bit, I raised my daughter, who was adopted from South Korea here in Falmouth, and, you know, she sees the world somewhat differently and probably much more sensitively than I do, and I could just tell you, there's been many times when she was in tears because of something somebody said, and just subtle little things that don't respect the individual as a person, and all of their humanity, and all of their backgrounds, and their differences, and aptitudes, and what have you. It's, you know, it's a sensitive thing, but we have to recognize that these are human beings just like us, and they deserve our respect and appreciation as well for their contributions. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yep, Nancy?
I'd like to thank you as well. Megan, I know in our affirmative action committee, we're really taking a look at those microaggressions that people don't understand or are not sensitive to, and really trying to make sure that people understand what they are and how they hurt.
Thank you, it's important stuff.
This was the same topic I was going to do at the
Sorry.
No, it's fine, I'm glad you did it. I just wish we can just stop the hatred, it's just insidious, and, you know, we gotta hate one group after another. It's like, when does it end, and where does it all come from? I'm just so tired of it.
Yep, so we thankfully have a community that tries to focus on these things, so we'll keep pushing for that and to do better. So, all right, under announcements, any announcements from the Board? Sam?
I have two. This one I've given before, but I do want to stress it. The EDIC, working with the developer of the second phase of the landfill, the solar panel landfill up on the town dump, is offering up to a 50, well, 50% discount. The program is called Joe for Sun, Joe-4-Sun. It will pay up to 50% of electric charges, a savings of up to $300 per year. There is a limit on it. You must be a low-income ratepayer in order to qualify, and to get information on this, I would ask you to go to the falmouthedic.org website. There's information on this particular program. You can apply. There are also, I know many of our not-for-profit organizations at Town are aware of this program and are making it, you know, letting people know about it and helping them actually submit an application, but we're anxious to actually get more participants in it. There's been a relatively few people applying so far. So it's falmouthedic.org, falmouthedic.org, and then there's a phone number with Citizens Energy that you can call if you want specific details. I'll give that to you. It's 855-563-4786, 855-563-4786. The second announcement is, one, there's a deadline that's coming up at the end of this month. The Town of Falmouth and Falmouth EDIC have grant funds available to assist qualified low and moderate income business owners in Falmouth who have experienced business losses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Applications will be accepted by the EDIC starting March 1st, which is long gone, and the deadline is March 31st, which is coming up next week. The maximum grant amount is $10,000, and again, I would refer you to the Falmouth EDIC website, so it's falmouthedic.org, and you could call if you want. To call 508-548-7440, 7508-548-7440, if you want some information and you think you might qualify.
Great, thank you, Sam. Any other announcements?
Just looking at an email that I got from the League of Women Voters, that there's a legislator's webinar on Friday, March 26th, from 12:30 to 1:30 PM. You can go on the League of Women Voters Falmouth website and look it up.
Great, thank you. Okay, public comment. This is a period of time and opportunity for individuals to speak for up to two minutes on a subject matter that is not on our agenda this evening. If you want to speak on something on our agenda, you just need to wait till that part is before us, and otherwise, if you'd like to speak on something, you may do so. I am just giving a moment to see if anybody weighs in on the chat. As I said when I first called this meeting to order, for folks who are not comfortable using Zoom, if you'd like something read at public comment, you can send it to us in advance. Because it is not on our agenda, it is not, we can't have a conversation with you about whatever it is that you raise up during this time period. We just simply hear it, and we can respond to it at another time when it's on our agenda. So I do not see anything under public comment. Did anyone from the Board get something that they were asked to read into public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move to our summary of actions then, please. Application for one-day Sunday entertainment licenses, Falmouth Yacht Club, 290 Clinton Avenue, for the days of Sun, for the Sundays, 6/27, 7/11, 7/25, 8/8, 8/22, 9/5, from 4 to 6 PM. Good evening.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good, how are you? Any questions for the applicant?
I would move approval, but also acknowledge the recognition of the COVID precautions that they've put in place for these events.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, one thing though, I do notice a difference on our agenda. It says 6 PM, and on the licenses says 6:30. Were you looking for it until 6:30?
Ideally, we'd love to have 6:30, but we'll go for 6 PM.
Okay, well, I think the Board has it within their purview to let it go until 6:30, if that's, if that's a request. I'm sure it was a typo from the license to the
I'm sorry, it was, yes, it was.
That's okay.
One comment, please.
Go ahead, Doug.
Question, I guess. So this is, there's multiple licenses, and this is a new location for the band, right next to the harbor, and
Right.
Facing back toward the building?
They'll be facing back toward the building, yeah.
And what I would ask is that if, being that this is a new event, and if it comes on as a big surprise, and the water, you know, sound carries across water much more than it does in other places, if we find that it's very disruptive, would you consider curtailing it?
Yeah, yeah, if it's disruptive, we'll curtail it for sure. Our goal here is to keep it really mellow and quiet and make it for the enjoyment of our members, and quite honestly, the people who walk down along the water. I mean, you know, Falmouth Harbor is a beautiful site, and the water is great, and if we have a little bit of music, and everybody's staying away from each other and staying safe with COVID, then it's a win-win.
Just a little concerned about all the people that might be staying on their boats for the summer, and, you know, they're not too far away, and you got a motel next door, so there are some neighbors.
Nancy?
It sounds like, from what I see, it's live acoustic music, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're trying, we're, our goal is to not amplify music and keep it mellow.
There's no amplification?
No. No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It doesn't say that, and so, to me, live acoustic is pretty mellow, so I would move
Okay.
Great, I thank Doug Brown for asking though, because we had many conversations about acoustic music that suddenly was really loud at the fairgrounds, so.
That's why I went, I looked for acoustic, and I looked for whether it was amplified or not, and thinking, hmm, I want to just make sure, and it says acoustic.
Perfect, so I have a motion and a second for 4 to 6:30, for the dates previously mentioned. All those in favor? Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, English-Braga, aye, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Take care.
Have a good one, bye-bye.
You too. Next, we have, under administrative orders, vote to accept FY21 first responder on naloxone grant funds from the Department of Public Health in the amount of $6,750.1.
I would move approval accepting that, great.
Okay.
Okay, Patterson.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion. By roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Great, thank you.
Thanks to the Police Department for providing this extra intervention opportunity for our citizens.
Definitely, still needed. It's been drowned out a little bit by COVID, but this is still an important issue that we're struggling with, so.
Indeed.
All right, we have under business COVID-19 update. I see Scott McGann coming on. Good evening, Scott. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Great, great, okay. I'm gonna take the screen, if that's okay with everybody? Everybody see that okay?
Now we can.
Okay, great. So essentially, the, you know, we've increased the eligibility, so I brought this, this is from the State's website. I think last time we talked, we were talking about educators being next up, and now we're at individual, individuals age 60-plus, and workers in certain sectors, transit, grocery, restaurant, you know, food and agriculture, sanitation, public works, public health workers, will be eligible as of today. And then, and for five, individuals age 55, and individuals with one certain medical condition, which we call comorbidities. And then, starting on April 19th, it'll be everybody ages 16 and plus. So that's where the phase, the eligibility is now for vaccine. As far as changes, the mass vac sites only are allowing a pre-registration, so you could do that at any point, pre-register, and what the State will do is give you notice within 24 hours if you want to accept an appointment. That's only gonna be at the mass vac sites. For us, it'll be Dartmouth and Gillette being the closest two. All the other registrations, such as the pharmacies, you still do it as you would always would, and also non-state mass vac sites, such as Barstool County Fairgrounds, or the 4Cs through Barstool County Health, will also not be part of this registration tool. This is just for the mass vac sites. So to anybody who is looking for vaccine through Barstool County, I'm gonna give you this slide. This is what happens when you call up the Barstool County Department of Health and the Environment. This immediately comes up. Sign yourself up for that email. That would allow you to get notice when upcoming clinics are. We also put it on our website as well, so we'll put it on the website as soon as we get a notification that there'll be an upcoming clinic. Speaking of clinics, Barstool County Health and the Environment, which is who we're, we are working with, has a three-fold increase in doses starting this week. So no more 1170, we're up to 3,510 per week, so yay for that. The next, this upcoming week, there'll be three clinics, 900 doses at the 4Cs. The registration was last week. So this upcoming Friday, let's say, at, let's say, noon time, there'll be another registration for clinics, again, at the 4Cs. Also, we're gonna be getting, now that we're getting more vaccines, you'll see more activity at the fairgrounds, for those that don't want to necessarily go out to 4Cs. So the 4Cs will be the hub, and also there'll be, you know, additional clinics down Cape and also at the, at the fairgrounds. So that's great news that we're getting more vaccine, we'll be able to do more. And, you know, if the State gives us more in the future, we'll do more clinics. So again, your places to find it will be the, you know, the state sites, the regional sites, either the fairgrounds or 4Cs will be the closest two. You always can check the pharmacies, and the pharmacies are sneaky good at getting vaccines, you know, 35 to 50 a day adds up, or whatever they're doing. So they're getting people done. So you can also check their sites. Again, you can go on this mass.gov and get onto the, find the CVS site and the Walgreens. And veterans over 55 would have to go to Brockton, I think it's the closest to VA hospital, but they can't, it is available for veterans over the age of 55. So that's where we are right now, the current state of vaccines. Also, the Cape Cod Regional Vaccine Consortium, which was Senator Seer, Senator Moran, and others, worked out a deal with Cape Cod Healthcare, to take care of the most vulnerable residents and senior citizens, which is not that online registration system. It's been highly, highly effective. You would call the Senior Center. So Jill Bishop and everybody at the Senior Center's done an awesome job over the last few weeks coordinating that list. So if you're having difficulty, and I'll, this will make sense in a second when I show you the next slide. If you're having difficulty getting registered, and you're over, right now, over the age of 65, I haven't inquired about, now that the guidance has changed to 60, whether they would want to do 60, but right now, 65 and older, you would call the Senior Center, 508-540-0196. Also, yep, sure.
Can I ask a question? I had a neighbor just ask me today, she wants to get a second shot, but it's Moderna is the vaccine. You mentioned Pfizer, but are there
Okay, Cape Cod Healthcare is using, is getting Moderna for, by and large. Barstool County's getting Pfizer. They're running the 4Cs clinics in tandem, so if you're going because you registered Barstool County, right now you'd be getting Pfizer at 4Cs if she's got, if that individual's gotten Moderna. Reach out to us, or have, or reach out to the Senior Center, and see where Cape Cod Healthcare is about scheduling their second rounds. Okay, because they're still working on first doses. Moderna's got that long 28-day, so Barstool, Cape Cod Healthcare hasn't even been into us for 28 days, and so they, if they're doing the vaccine, they should be reaching out for the second appointments, much like CVS, you would make an appointment at Gillette, for example, you make the appointment as soon as you're done, or actually there. So you can do it in the car before you drive home. So Cape Cod Healthcare should be doing that as well, if not, then we'd, you know, we'll have to work on that with them.
Thank you.
So the homebound also are being done. We are taking care of the homebound. We're using the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. Again, the Senior Center is the coordinating party for that, and like I said before, they're doing an awesome job over there. And so if you're truly homebound, you would call the Senior Center, they'll go through the process. Obviously, senior, homebound population's very difficult to do. It takes one person about, it takes about a half hour per person. You do have travel time, you have to wait period and so forth. So both, if you, if you're, if you've really been out of luck of getting a vaccine, and you're above, right now 65, for the most part, you know, if Cape Cod Healthcare allows to go 60, or if you're homebound, you know, if you're 60 or over, I guess, at homebound also as well, or actually any age, if you're truly, truly homebound, I would want you to call the Senior Center. So let's look at, let's look at some good news. This is our weekly update about Falmouth vaccination data. As you can see, that over 75, we have 4,548 people. We have 87% of that population with at least one dose. So that's, that's, that's pretty robust. And 63% are fully vaccinated. So as hard and as difficult as it started out getting vaccine, people vaccinated, it seemed to have worked itself out through, you know, clawing around and trying to get appointments, having family members get you clawing around and trying to get appointments, having family members get you appointments, getting Cape Cod, the big, big thing being Cape Cod Healthcare and working with the senior center to get that list going has really, really helped. Uh, so we're in, you know, the most Cape towns are right around that same number, eighty to ninety, maybe eighty five to ninety five percent vaccinated. Sixty five to seventy five, we're up to sixty nine with these first dose. You'll have a lot less fully vaccinated because the guidance changed to sixty five year olds. Um, much more recently, so they're not on to their second dose, especially Moderna with the twenty eight days. Um, and you can see that thirty six percent of all residents have had uh at least one dose in town. So as clunky as it's been and as frustrating as it's been, um, we are getting to a a point where we're we're making headway. So um, so that's it for vaccines. Before I talk about cases, any questions vaccine wise?
Yes, I've heard mixed messages about vaccination for educators.
Yeah, let me, yeah, so here, let me, I actually did miss the slide. So there's four educated designated educator days uh that mass vac sites, which is March twenty seventh, April third, April tenth, April eleventh. Pharmacies should also be available for that group and Barstool County is going to be running clinics. Uh, I don't think they have it posted yet, but a couple of upcoming Saturdays, we're going to be doing uh some clinics as well. Uh, I believe help Cape Cod Healthcare has also been calling um and working on getting the teachers done. Um, so you have those those opportunities. So actually, there's four opportunities. There's the uh mass vac sites, pharmacies, Barstool County Health, who's been reaching out to superintendents and Cape Cod Healthcare as well has been calling. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I meant to cover that slide. So any other questions vaccine wise?
Uh, I got one.
Yeah, sure.
So now I'm uh eligible today, so I guess I'm going to be shopping around tomorrow. Do you have advice or what do you suggest? Should I go with uh CBS option?
What I would do is I wouldn't, I wouldn't narrow myself down to any one particular place. So I would go on the state website. I would pre-register myself uh for an upcoming state vaccine clinic. Um, the then the uh Gillette only really does take ten minutes once you walk in the door to get a shot. So it's real quick. Um, I would also register with Barstool County, like I showed you that slide that comes up with a pop up. They'll send notifications. Uh, that'll be, you know, everybody. So that was nine hundred doses a day. So that's twenty seven hundred doses. You know, that might only take an hour to fill or less. So you would be one of those that goes on at the time that's been prescribed by the county and you would register yourself that way. You'd also go on mass.gov and or and, you know, get on to the different uh pharmacies that have it available. That's also linked up with the state's site as well.
Okay, so I'm not limited to just registering in one place?
No, but the second dose is where you want to go back to. It gets kind of, you know, clunky when you're trying to, if you get one, but you can go each place as long as you get the same vaccine. You know, you want to have the same vaccine.
I'd rather select a place that's more local, and I guess that would be the Barstool County website, right?
Barstool County be local. Obviously, mass vac sites will be Gillette or Dartmouth. That's the two, the two closest. Um, if you want one closer, obviously, now that we're getting three times the doses, you have three times the chance to get a to get vaccinated. Um, obviously, we're getting more doses. We're also opening it up to more people. So I don't think the simplicity of just getting it whenever you want it is still there, right? Because we've increased it threefold, but we've also increased it to, you know, X number more, X percentage more of the population. Um, but that's where we're at. I I really foresee that the the floodgates are starting to open. We should be getting more and more and more as time progresses. And it gets a lot, lot, lot easier to uh to find a dose. But looking, going back to that original, I mean, as hard as it is for especially that age group over seventy five to get online and register, we got eighty seven so far. We'll be, you know, over ninety percent back, you know, at least their first dose um this far into it. So I don't, I I think if you, you know, as much as everybody's scratching and clawing, you'll get there. Um, it's just, it may not be the exact week you want. Um, you just have to keep sort of plugging away at it.
Right.
It's not as simple, it would have been a lot simpler if they just sent me, you know, sixty thousand doses and let us give it out, but they didn't. So
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions vaccine wise? I was very happy to see the eighty seven percent. That's a, that's a, you know, that was the second week they came out and I was very impressed with that because that was the first time I was able to see how many people had been done. As of the different sources, you get the vaccine. So we're getting there, folks.
It's possible the other thirteen just don't want it.
Well, there's going to be a certain percent. You're not going to hit a hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, that's that's easy. Say, um, in terms of, so in terms of cases, our case count as of today is uh one thousand two hundred and seventy. You can see in the last uh six weeks that we've been hovering around the twenty five to thirty five range for cases. That seems to be where our sort of our where we're at, sort of our baseline, you know, sort of amount of cases. You can see we're pretty flat back in last summer where we were less than ten. We're sort of in that uh, you know, twenty five to thirty so cases per week. The red dot indicates where we are halfway through the week now. Uh, we're at sixteen, a little bit more than halfway through the week. I take the, I take this number every Thursday afternoon. So we're about halfway through. Um, and so we're sort of hovering in that. And um, so that's where we are with cases. Our our, we've been yellow for quite a while. Our percent positivity has been right around the low twos, under two and a half. Um, so we're doing fairly well with that. Um, if you look at it from uh townwide, uh by, I mean, by countywide, you can see that Falmouth is on the lighter side, so a lower infection rate. Barstool and Yarmouth are having an uh a spike right now. So we have to keep an eye on that because Barstool and Yarmouth aren't far away. And so we we got to keep an eye on that to see if it work, you know, if any of that sort of works its way here. But they are having an issue right now down there, uh mid Cape. Um, but we're we're holding our own definitely over the last um last few weeks. So. Any questions?
Nancy, just go right ahead, jump right.
Okay. Um, Scott, did you see that article in the Cape Cod Times on Saturday about the state sending a team down um to the Cape because of the uh potential spike and a third wave of COVID?
I didn't read the article, but did hear about the article.
And they're basically concentrating on Barstool and Yarmouth, correct?
Yeah.
So I just, I was just curious to know if they had done anything.
They need to do, they're doing some outreach from what I've been told, be doing some outreach as well to try to to try to mitigate um that that occurrence that's happening there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I might, I might say that I just discovered one of our Falmouth residents uh came down with COVID a week or two ago. And uh, you know, it's getting over it, but uh middle aged person, I'm kind of surprised, but it's still in our community.
Yeah, I mean, you can still get COVID. Yeah, there's no, no two ways around it. Um, you eventually get to the point where the vaccinations are really kicking in and keeping it down. But you're, you've got, you also found the Brazilian variant on the on Barstool County last week or so. So, you know, it's tough to keep, you know, we still do the contact tracing like we always, we're not slowing down on that. So that's, you know, jumping on the the contact tracing is still what we've done since the beginning. And that helps, you know, mitigate as best we can as to quarantine and isolate.
And wear masks.
Yeah. So the social distance, that stuff hasn't gone away and isn't planning on going away anytime soon. So, yeah, the whole stuff that we've done and and as a, as a, as a whole, our infection rate even even among us all at the Cape has been lower than a lot of the Cape towns, especially the larger Cape towns. So, you know, we've done a fairly good job and let's just keep plugging away at it. So, um, as far as guidance, I did give you a little misinformation last week, so I do apologize. When I talked about the uh phase four step one, which started today about twelve percent capacity, it actually doesn't include, does not include fairs, festivals and road races. I have a call, I did have a call with the road race, Julian and myself. Um, so it was, I thought the way it was written, it was in there, but after uh getting a couple of emails from the state with some clarifications, it's not. It's really just sort of Ben Way and and Gillette and so forth with the twelve percent.
Um, which makes sense. It makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I I do. I think there'll be, will be at some point, will there be some percentage allowed of that? Yeah, as long as the vaccine vaccination rates stay, you know, keep going and we we get people vaccinated, the cases peter out. Yeah, you know, so I don't, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you exactly what's going to happen, but I would think, I guess.
I have another question if I could. Scott, is there any difference in the management of the uh gatherings, whether it's on private property or a town uh approved event?
Yeah. So up here in this, in this slide up in the upper left, it says events and venues and public settings would be a hundred indoor, a hundred and fifty outdoor, private setting is ten and twenty five.
So a private setting being like uh a large uh concert venue, it doesn't matter.
Uh, well, I think it's more private settings uh would be, you know, a backyard barbecue, whereas a public setting would be some sort of event like you just met with um uh the act club, something of that of nature.
Yeah, or a hotel that has a large space.
Yeah, that would, that would be a hundred and one fifty, one fifty out, one hundred in.
Okay, so basically the same rules apply to those type of events as would public events that our board might authorize.
Yeah, so five thousands, you know, unless you're in that twelve percent because of the five thousand or more capacity at a stadium, you're stuck with the um the one fifty and one hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Subject to change at a moment's notice. I don't know where that's going to be, but I'll keep you guys, you know, I'll sign that out when I get it, when I find out. I do not find out much more ahead of the governor's proclamations over each time, roughly about a couple of hours.
We expect it to continue to get larger, but it's possible it could get rolled back if we keep on getting infected, right?
Uh, yeah, it's all about the data. Like, this is, these are state, these are state slides. It does say subject to public health data. So it all depends on what direction we go.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And the only other thing I want to cover is that the travel uh, you know, we're into a travel advisory. Uh, so no longer requirement. Um, it does fully vaccinated um are do not are exempt uh if you're traveling for fewer than twenty four hours. And um, so uh, we still want you to do it if you're, if you don't fall into those categories, but the travel is now a travel advisory. So that was some of the changes. And I'm going to stop sharing. And any other questions?
Any other questions for Scott?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Scott.
Right.
Thanks, Scott. Have a good night. All right. Next, we have discussion of potential separation of April town meeting articles, excuse me, and future special town meeting. So um I'll just quickly set the stage and then Julian and Peter can kind of jump in and talk about um the logistics. But this really has come about, um, as we've been hearing, and I know many of you have been on some of the chains, a lot of town meeting members um raising concerns. And and when precinct captains spoke with Peter and Julian and town staff, they raised concerns that this is um a very large warrant. It would be a large warrant for our regular town meeting, particularly given that there are some really substantive and we know debate provoking articles. Um, but, you know, the concern was here we are going to have a virtual town meeting. And, you know, will that impact the ability for people to really truly weigh in? Uh, we had a good virtual town meeting. I think it was, it it went really well, but we didn't have, aside from maybe one or two articles that generated conversation, um, but most of the items uh, you know, kind of went by pretty smoothly. And then the way in we had was primarily from town meeting members. You know, we know already, because we've gotten some um emails from outside groups about some of the articles that are on this warrant, that there are going to be a number of people who want to weigh in on um, you know, the subject matter that we have in front of us. So the idea was, can we separate out those articles that are really time sensitive, um, particularly those pertain to the budget, so that we cannot, you know, we we don't disrupt the uh services, we don't disrupt uh finances for the town and then hold some other items that are not time sensitive, okay, that don't have a fiscal year. Um, you know, deadline in the same way, um, although Peter's gonna gonna catch me on that. There are some fiscal issues with some of them, but not quite in the, not quite as sensitive um in terms of it needing to happen sooner. Um, and can we separate some of those out and have a have a meeting in June where we meet in person uh outside or in the field house, knowing that a lot more folks will hopefully have been vaccinated by then? If it's nice enough to do outside, we can use the same procedure that we did with our first outdoor town meeting, where actually we had a lot of weigh in from the public about several articles and that worked really well. So that's where the conversation has um come from. We've discussed it with the moderator, with town clerk, with town council, with Julian and Peter, um, with the school uh department, because we would be looking to use some of their facilities. So um, that is where we stand, and that's why this matters before us tonight. So I'm going to ask Julian or Peter to kind of talk through um, whatever else I have, you know, maybe just the details a little bit more. Julian? You're muted. You're just muted.
Sorry, I'm chairman. I think Frank Duffy should join us as well.
Okay, great. So Frank can, if Frank can uh come on while we're kind of, maybe Peter, did you want to walk us through a little bit? Thanks.
Sure. Right. So uh Megan overviewed the issue quite well. The considerations that we're looking at is how do we take on some of the more time sensitive elements of the town meeting warrant? And then defer the remainder to a later date. And uh Frank Duffy was able to uh point out for us that there are some limitations in that regard in that there is an election May eighteenth, and we cannot open a meeting before the election and adjourn to a date after the election. Uh, that's a provision in the special act uh that established Falmouth's representative town meeting. So what we are proposing to address the um both the ability to take on some of the time, time sensitive financial matters that we would really like to address in April and allow for an in-person meeting for the remainder of the town meeting warrant is to act um essentially to plan a special town meeting for those articles that we do not expect to be able to address at the remote meeting on April twelfth. So that is the, you know, the general plan that we're here to talk about tonight is um voting a special town meeting warrant that would include all the potential articles we would not address on April twelfth. So we would adjourn the meeting. Uh, I believe Rep. Moderator David Viera has indicated he would call for a blanket vote first. And then uh go through the procedure, the town meeting procedure required to identify the, I think it's about fifteen priority articles to be acted upon at the remote meeting. And then dissolve the annual town meeting. But before we do that, the petitioners um in particular will want to be assured that their articles are going to be addressed. So what we're, what we're suggesting to the board tonight is that you call for a special town meeting. Uh, and that that warrant be opened and closed before April twelfth. So that it's not just a gentleman's agreement, it's actually a posted special town meeting warrant, and the petitioners can see that their issue will be addressed at the special town meeting in June.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. Uh, Doug Jones, go ahead.
And so I, as I understand from what David said, when we tried to do something similar, we would have to technically indefinitely postpone all these articles. But we would have already put them on a warrant for a June town meeting. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And and the reason, we went through several iterations, but really one of the prominent concerns we had is exactly what Peter just alluded to. We do not want the petitioners or any of the others that were postponed to think that we were kicking the can or that somehow it was left to chance, you know, what was going to happen with their articles. So that's why we thought, you know, this mechanism gives them that security that those articles are on a special town meeting warrant. Any other questions from the board? Doug Brown?
I'm concerned about uh deferring the Affordable Housing Fund, the CPC, a couple of those CPC ones seem time sensitive. Isn't our Affordable Housing Fund pretty low right now?
Can you speak to that, Peter? Because I know we went over those.
Sure, I can. Uh, so the, you're you're right, Doug, that uh there there are some projects that are uh in the planning stages that um would exceed the the balance of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund presently. However, the town meeting article is to appropriate estimated revenues for fiscal year twenty two. So those revenues are actually not available to be um to be received and to be appropriated until July first. So as long as that article is voted before July one, it really does not uh slow down the town's ability to appropriate those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
Do we have a draft date for the special town meeting that we were proposing?
Yes, so um we don't have a date that we would announce tonight necessarily, but what we've done is, and I'll actually, I'll just defer to you, Peter, because you've been, you and Julian have been the ones having the conversations. I know you had some update on that today.
Sure. So uh, we've been speaking with uh David Viera and Megan English Braga about uh the potential dates for town meeting and uh there was a a desire to potentially have some flexibility so that we would have an outdoor meeting if the weather allows, but have the ability to go inside to the high school field house if there is inclement weather. And so we have been communicating with the schools and unfortunately, the schools really are going to be using the gymnasium and the field house for some combination of classes and cafeteria. And that is because, you know, right now they're on alternating weeks, but they're hoping that by early June, they will be in person without alternating weeks and that with the social distancing, they therefore need more room indoors to spread out. So indoors is really not an option at the schools until after the last day of school, which is June twenty second. So that that leaves the the board with some some options. You could either consider an earlier date that does not have an indoor option. You could either consider an earlier date that does not have an indoor option and then you need to deal with, uh, you know, rain dates in the case of inclement weather, uh, or we, we could put the meeting off until after June 22nd. Preliminary conversations, uh, among staff members, including Julian and Jen Mullin and Frank. We, we don't see any, uh, any terrible risk of a delay of a couple of days if we call a meeting for say, you know, June 27th and it gets delayed a couple of days. Uh, even past the July 1 deadline. Um, you know, we'd certainly rather not, it's cleaner if we can have it done before the end of the fiscal year. But that does seem like a viable option if the board wants to be able to call a special town meeting for the high school with sort of option one being outdoors and fallback for inclement weather being in the field house.
Any other questions or comments about this?
Uh, if the schools definitely got their last day on the 22nd, I would suggest we consider the 23rd and, and just pencil it in.
Well, they, they may need an extra day to move furniture around if they're using that for classroom spaces and now all of a sudden they need a wide open floor. So wouldn't make it too tight. Why, why can we not, do we have to set that date?
No, not tonight. So we need to set it, uh, by April 5th is when we meet. Okay. So we need to, yeah, April 5th is a date. So we can continue to have some conversations about logistics, um, with the school, which is what Peter and Julian have been doing. Um, and then we would vote a date on April 5th.
Everything during the day or an evening?
We, we've looked at both. So we've looked at the idea of it being a Saturday so we could start early and then, you know, you really know you're going to finish it that day because you, you have enough time. Um, but you know, we've also looked at some of the weekday, um, weekdays as well. Is there a preference from this board? Cause we'll go back and we'll have this conversation again with the, the group of folks, uh, with the moderator, with the town clerk. Staff and schools, are there a preference or weigh in from this board about a Saturday versus a weekday?
I like the Saturday idea, but does it put undue, uh, work for the, uh, staff?
Probably not, because it would be the night before, but, um, I think the, in the past, the one concern we've had is, um, you know, sat both Saturdays and Sundays are religious, um, days for folks. Um, does that, you know, alienate anybody? Um, you know, if it's a beautiful day in June, are there some town meeting members? Although I think this is less of a concern because we have pretty dedicated town meeting members, but, um, you know, that can, that can also be an issue as well.
Email out to all town meeting members and, um, solicit response on Saturday option?
And the only Saturday would be the 26th of June.
Right.
We're saying they aren't going to do it on the 19th and the 12th would be way too early.
And we want to wait till after the 22nd anyway.
Yeah, it has to be after the 22nd. If we want to be able to have that inside option, which, you know, I mean, June is still an unpredictable uh, month in terms of, you know, what kind of weather we're going to get. So.
Is there any chance the rec center? I mean, is that gymnasium? I know it's smaller than the Falmouth Special One.
I don't know. Or if that parking lot can accommodate, I don't know if that parking lot can accommodate all town meeting members. I don't know how many spots are there now. Uh, Julian?
Yeah, I think our general sense is that there's insufficient space in Gus County to accommodate, um, if we have a large turnout, which we would expect.
So let me start by this. Um, it, does this board? Excuse me. Um, is this board generally disposed to this notion of having a special town meeting? So having our town meeting in April and then having a special town meeting in June. Well, let me take kind of the subject matter in two pieces.
Yeah, I would make a motion to go ahead and create a special town meeting warrant with the articles that have been suggested for June town meeting. With the intention of indefinite postponing those articles at this town meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that particular piece? Uh, Julian? And then Doug Brown. Julian, you're muted. Go ahead. You're not now. You're okay.
I think he's frozen.
Oh. It's such a shocking concept that it's, uh, Doug Brown, why don't you go ahead and then we'll come back to Julian?
I'd like to consider putting that one item in for the CPC funding for affordable housing, just so there's no, uh, worry about that.
Yeah, especially. I think once you start going down that path, there's just no difference between whether that one gets passed in April or June. It's not, it's funds that are not available until July. And then once we start doing that one, people will say, well, if you're going to do that one, what about mine? And I see no reason to add that to it.
Well, I can give you one. Uh, many times the processing of these applications for state agencies require support from the local municipality. And if this got kicked off into August, there may be a missed opportunity to get state funding to support some of these projects.
Why are we talking August?
Well, what if we have governor's order? What if we go into phase three of, uh, pandemic?
Yeah, well, well.
Not that we probably will, but it could.
I, I agree with Doug Brown. I would rather see it stay in the April town meeting. I mean, it's not a big deal. It's a CPC funds.
It's only because developers are depending on it and I don't want to hold up these projects and cause another problem.
Let me just have Peter weigh in, because, um, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Uh, so the, Sam, you may recall that we did have a mechanism that allows us to make an award subject to appropriation. So in terms of the, you know, the, the state application and the applicant, the housing developer applicant needing to demonstrate to the state that it has local support, we could potentially appropriate an amount of money that's available right away. And in combination with or, or in place of that, uh, to issue an award letter that is subject to appropriation. So the, the town can go on record supporting the project and the applicant would know that, you know, subject to the town meeting vote, that money is going to be coming. And in terms of, um, member Brown's point about developers waiting for money. We have fully set any award that we've already made, we have set aside the funds for that. So this isn't going to affect any uh, awards that have already been made by the board from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Thank you.
So, so if we have some kind of, uh, revised pandemic and we're unable to meet in June and we get past July, is there ways to address the housing issue?
Yeah. No, one, I would say we probably, if that happened, would just have to do a virtual. Because I don't think we would hold off, we would, excuse me, meet. And we would have the town meeting and we would have, it would have to be virtual, just like the last time, because it was really all we had as an option. You know, now we have this potential option in front of us because of the phase we're in and because we're going into nicer weather. But, um, you raise a good point, you know, this isn't going to be, we're not going to wait for ideal situation. If, if it becomes unfortunately untenable once again to meet in person, then we would go back to virtual and get the town's business done. Uh, it wouldn't be something we would just kind of kick it out indefinitely and.
Okay. Well, as long as Mr. Johnson's top is sure that it's not going to be a problem, I guess I'll go with long, long range.
And I just want to read the comment from Barbara Schneider, which says it will be, be on the blanket anyway. That won't be a discussion. All right. Julian?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to summarize that in your packet, you have a indication of which warrant articles are anticipated for the virtual and which for the special. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, it's Article 1, Articles 2 to 16, and Article 37, uh, anticipated for the annual.
I guess I was actually suggesting this is two separate motions. My first motion was just on the concept of it. And then I was going to do a motion on article by, which articles would go where.
Okay. So, so let me start going back to what I was talking about before, which is exactly what Doug is, Doug Jones is saying, which is can I get a vote conceptually, um, on dividing to two separate meetings, our regular annual meeting that's already scheduled for April and then a special town meeting scheduled for a date to be announced in June?
Yes.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. And, um, then what I would like to do is to go through and and Frank, please stop me if I'm doing this incorrectly. Um, like to go through and we would, would we designate tonight which articles are on the April town meeting?
No, I guess what I would suggest is I would move these articles to go on the special town meeting.
No. I think you have.
How we do it?
It, I think it has to be in a form of a recommendation because the warrant is now belongs to town meeting. They can do what they want to do.
Right.
So you have to make this a recommendation.
We, tonight we can create the warrants for the special town meeting.
They haven't announced it yet.
Well, I mean, we can announce a special town meeting and then create a warrant for it with the articles that we are hoping get indefinitely postponed.
But you just said you're going to do that on log, uh, April.
So I think, so let me, let me just step back. I think what the idea was have the discussion tonight. Vote to have the two, uh, separate town meetings. Excuse me. Set the date, do we set the date tonight for which the warrant opens and closes? And then we vote.
Okay.
Okay. So then we would vote on, when it closes, we vote what the recommendations are for those articles on that warrant. That is my understanding of how we discuss this. Correct? Okay. Yes, Peter?
Yeah, I, I was just going to sort of confirm that typically you don't vote the articles on the warrant until the warrant has closed.
So.
It's just the first step of declaring that there will be a special town meeting and then April 5th. You will have, we, we will bring to you the articles recommended and obviously you can discuss them and amend them at that time. And then you'll vote to close the warrant with the certain articles on the warrant.
So the last thing we need to do tonight is we need to designate the time for the warrant closing. Correct? Okay. So the warrant for the special town meeting, right, will close on April 4th, correct? How, how, sorry, how did we say we were going to do that?
April 2nd.
April 3rd.
Okay. And that's the Friday, right?
Second is a Friday.
So the warrant would open, I think we had talked about it being open for 24 hours, right? It opens on April 1st and then the, the, it closes on April 2nd. At 5:00 PM.
I saw move.
Patterson, second.
All those in favor, by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. And so just for the public, what will happen is at our meeting on April 5th, we will, um, go through and set the warrant with our recommendations for the town meeting that will be, the special town meeting that will be held in June. We will also on that day announce the exact date of that, um, town meeting. And again, the purpose of this, for anyone who's a petitioner, for anyone who, you know, has something that they're very passionate about, we are going to get to those articles. This isn't starting the process all over again. Uh, we're going to get to those articles in the June town meeting. This is simply to afford us the opportunity to really have a robust discussion on these issues and allow town meeting members and the public to be able to weigh in on the articles that will be before us on that date.
I guess what I'm suggesting is I'd like to make a motion that this board agrees to put those articles on the special town meeting. We're not actually creating the warrant tonight, but saying this is what we are going to do. Do we want to, if we do that, do we want to delineate which ones we're talking about?
Frank, is that something that we can do tonight?
Uh, I think it's a sense of the board right now. You'd, I think you'd really have to actually vote when you create the warrant after.
Absolutely. Yep. But I would, I just want everyone to know this is where, very, very clear this is what we're doing.
So it's a discussion for tonight and then we vote it on, on April. So for discussion purposes, go ahead, Doug Brown.
Yes, his art, okay.
Oh, I was just.
Doug Jones, excuse me. I'm sorry, Doug Jones.
Uh, I'm suggesting Articles 2, Articles 17 through 34, and Articles 38 to 40. We are committed to putting on the special town meeting for July, for June.
Hi. You missed 35 and 36, right?
I thought I said Articles, sorry, I meant to say down to Article 36.
17 through 30, 36.
Yep.
And then 30, 38 through 40.
Yep.
Right.
Right. Okay. So just conceptually, if folks want to take a look at the warrant and so they have an understanding, they can weigh in to any degree they wish to weigh in, but that's the, that's the concept of where we would be going. Um, and that will be the vote that we will take along with the recommendations for those articles on April 5th.
And if they didn't get a chance to write it down, they can go on the town's website and look up our packet and see the highlighted ones.
Exactly. It says A and J next to each one. So you can take a look at it. Great.
Patterson, second.
I don't think we even have to vote that. I think, I think we're just conceptually putting that out there.
Got it.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Sorry for the confusion. We haven't, we don't, this isn't something we engage in much. So doing it a little bit, uh, trying something new. All right. Thanks, Frank. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Peter. Thanks, Julian. Okay, next we have consider. Nope, sorry.
And that's for the beach committee?
Yeah. So I guess we did number two and three together. So we're moving on to four. Interview vote and appoint alternates for beach committee positions. We have a number of individuals. Why don't we start just in the order that we have them here?
We got one that wasn't listed on our agenda, but she came in just under the wire on Friday afternoon, I think, right?
Yes.
And I think Diane invited her to be interviewed. I don't know. It's a kind of a last minute invitation. I'm not sure if she made it.
We did extend an invitation to Christine Wagon.
Yes. Okay. So, um, if, just to remind folks, this was a discussion we had at our last meeting about putting temporary, excuse me, some alternate members on the beach committee, um, to help kind of lighten the load. There's significant work to be done on that committee and, um, and they requested that we add some additional members because of a charter review vote that still needs to, uh, you know, charter, um, uh, amendment to our charter that still needs to be voted in. It's not really appropriate for us to actually add additional members. But there's nothing that prevents us from adding some alternate members. And again, those, those folks could, um, assist with the tasks that the beach committee has. So that's what we're here to do tonight. And we had talked about, um, adding two additional positions. So we have, uh, six applicants for two positions at this point in time. Okay. So why don't we start with, uh, Dr. Barbara Schneider? If we can bring her on, I'm just going to do it in the order that we have here. If IT can bring her over. And do we set the timeline for this alternate appointment, Julian?
Yes, Madam Chair, we just indicated that, um, once that had been voted successfully, um, at the municipal election, that the board uh, would take it up, uh, within a couple of months to follow with a, uh, advertising and then permanent appointments. And obviously, uh, these alternates could be considered among those.
Great. So why don't we, um, I, I'm going to ask at this board, given the timeline, um, and the fact, so we have the, the vote in May and then we have a lot of items in front of us for the summer, including this town meeting. I would ask that if this appointment be till September 1st, 2021, and then we can, um, that will give us time to advertise before that and um, kind of make it a permanent. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, at least September.
Okay. Did you want to, do you want to get through the full summer season and do, do November 1 and then your past Columbus Day and?
That would be good.
Okay. So this will be for an appointment, uh, to end November 1st, 2021. Okay. Welcome.
Good evening.
Barbara, nice to see you. Um, we have your information in front of us. And, um, I will open it up to the board. Have, does the board have any questions for Barbara?
I don't have any questions, but I've worked with Barbara on the Falmouth Build Association and she's always been a advocate for the beaches, especially Minot. So there's no question about her interest in the beach.
Any other questions? Do you want to say like maybe a, a one minute statement? I'm just trying to keep it, we have a lot of applicants, but please tell us your thoughts about, uh, what you think you might bring to it or why you'd like to, um, be on this committee.
I've been here since the late seventies and much, uh, very much involved with the beaches. I have watched over Minot and gone to the DPW every single spring and you've had me come to this board and give you my rant and rave about what needs to happen to be safe and so on, and keep working really closely with the DPW on those things. Um, I also have been helpful. I know that at their last meeting, at, they did, uh, visit the litter free Falmouth idea of Adopt a Beach. I was part of that, um, group for quite some time in its beginning stages and I've continued to work with Alan closely. In fact, he usually asks me for advice when he's going to draft and. he usually asks me for advice when he's gonna draft an idea. And I actually got the beach committee, their graphic designer, to give them a handout for the beaches and that happens to be an intern that I use for the dog park. That's been fantastic. And so I feel like I've already had some uh partnership in what they're doing and as you know, I as Doug said, I really care a lot about every one of the beaches in this town and would like to do whatever I can to help.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Barbara. All right. We will um see if we can have Carol Raider. And one thing I would note is we did have the I don't know if I'm gonna look and see if Ms. Waggit is in attendance. She did get her application in time. It just got to the town hall late. So let me just see. Doesn't look like she is, so I will discuss with this board after if we need to have uh hold our vote for one more meeting to allow her an opportunity, but I'll I'll put that before the board after. So uh Ms. Raider, welcome. You just need to unmute yourself if you would. Oh, there you are.
And start my video.
We can see you. If you just tilt your screen down a little bit, then there you go. Now we can see all of you. Thank you. Welcome. Um, let me start by um asking the board the same. Any questions uh for this applicant? We have information in front of us. Do you want to do the same and maybe just in a minute, just let us know what your what your interest is in this particular committee?
Well, I think that Falmouth's 10 beaches are one of our, you know, greatest resources. Um, and I am concerned about um the issue of rising sea level. So one of the things that I would like to institute is a way of monitoring each of our 10 beaches. Um and and just see what kind of data we can get. Um, I also have a background of working with high school students as a counselor, so I do look forward to meeting with the uh the young people during the some during the summertime as well. The one question I do have though is I was trying to see if there's a beach management plan for this year. And I was not able to locate it.
Uh, Mr. Suso, I don't know if you can weigh in. I know that they we had um the superintendent, acting superintendent of the beaches or superintendent of the beaches um with us last time along with beach committee, talking about um some of their plans, but Mr. Suso, did can you just speak to that?
Well, yeah, the uh as you noted, Madam Chair, at the last meeting, our acting beach superintendent gave the board a status report on preparations for the coming season. Uh, if from a standpoint of a management plan, we're talking about uh replenishing sand on beaches or things of that nature. Um, that's that's a really another concept, but I don't know whether that's the question being asked.
No, I was last year there was a there was a very elaborate plan that talked about how many people could be in the parking lot, how many people could be on.
Oh, you oh, I see. You mean for COVID. You mean for COVID. Yeah, that yeah, that's still being um it's a little bit of a moving target because the governor's um orders, you know, are are changing, so that is still one of um no final decisions have been made on that. That's an ongoing conversation between um the beach department and the health department and staff, um you know, to figure out what is required and um, you know, make the best decisions based on obviously from a health uh public health perspective, but as well, you know, weighing in recognizing how important those resources are. So the short answer is it's a work in progress as we get closer to see what the um how public health situation is.
Well, I think that everybody on the beach committee should really be on stay on top of it because we've got a little time issue that the beach stickers, you don't need the beach stickers until the end of May, but if we have nice April and May weather, um
Our lots are out there.
Our our lots may fill up with people from Worcester.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much and we will we may or may not vote this tonight because we have one other applicant um who hasn't been able to be here tonight, but um you'll know in just a few minutes what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have Larry Lieberfert. Or or do we? I'm just taking a look. I don't see him.
Madam Chair, yeah, and we saw him logged in earlier today, but he does not appear to be logged in at the moment.
Okay, all right, well, let us move along to David Glenn. Looking there as well.
Isn't attendees.
Okay, he is an attendees. If we could bring him over IT. We can also bring over Nancy Quigg. And she can just mute herself and that way it'll speed it up a little bit if we can bring them both over. And while we're just waiting for them to come on over. Oh, here we go.
Hello?
Hi Nancy. I think you is who's sharing the screen?
Me. I'm terrible at this, sorry.
That's okay. Um, why don't you, since you are with us, why don't you um let me ask the board, do you have any questions for Nancy? We have your um.
This is David Glenn. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome, David. I'm just gonna ask Nancy a few questions and then I'll jump right over to you. Thank you. So uh Nancy, we um have your application in front of us and do we have any questions from the board? What I would ask you Nancy is do you want to just give us a like I was asking other folks, maybe one minute? Um, kind of summary of what you um, you know, why you want to be on this committee?
Can you hear me? Hi, I think I'm here.
Can you hear you and we can see you. Go ahead.
Um, so I've been in this town since 1974, a summer resident. Um, I love this town. I made it my permanent home and I've raised children here. I served on the Falmouth Substance Abuse Commission for nine years. I was a VIPS uh volunteer. Um, very committed to this town. I feel like the beaches are one of this town's greatest assets. And we really need to protect them. I am a extremely hard worker. I hit the ground running, a great worker bee. Um, and ask away anything. I'm just deeply committed. I do want to mention uh for the sake of transparency. Uh, my daughter is a staff guard, Melissa Quigg. Uh, but I did, it is my understanding as an advisory uh board, I wouldn't be uh there's no uh I don't think a conflict. I think you'd have to ask Mr. Duffy or you you all might might know that, but I did want to mention that. Um, and uh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, any questions for Nancy? Yes, Doug Brown. Go ahead.
Have you had any chance to attend any of the meetings or observe them?
I have not. I was in school. Uh, I'm a licensed drug and alcohol counselor, so I have been in school, so no, I have not. But I do uh talk to Paul Moskowski a lot. I am on the beaches all the time. Uh, and have an idea of what went on with COVID and through my daughter, I I uh I kind of get the drift on what's going on with the beaches.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. All right. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Nancy, and we appreciate you joining us. Um, and as I don't know if you heard me say before, we may or may not make the vote tonight because there's one other applicant who got her stuff in in time, but um wasn't able, she didn't get an invitation to tonight until the last minute. So we don't vote it tonight, we'd vote at our very next meeting, but you'll know in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, Mr. Glenn. Yep, we can hear you. Welcome. Thank you for thank you for being patient. Uh, we have your application in front of us. And um is there if you would like to just kind of summarize maybe in one minute or two minutes, just your um interest in being on this committee, please.
Um, I've had a lot of experience with Falmouth Beaches. I was a lifeguard from 1962 through 67. My four children were Falmouth lifeguards, very aware of the issues facing the beaches. Um, I I look forward to this opportunity to get involved. I've been waiting to uh civic responsibility is an important thing to me. I'm aware of the issues facing the town. Uh, in with the beach nourishment, the erosion, the the parking issues, the trash issues. And I feel I could work collaboratively and uh bring a lot to help solve some of these problems.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Glenn? Doug Brown?
Yes, I'll ask the same one. I should have asked everybody this question. I'm sorry I didn't. Mr. Uh Glenn, have you had any chance to attend or observe any of the beach committee meetings?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So uh, the board, can I ask the board what their pleasure is uh with reference to the other applicant? I don't want to sway the board, but I'll I'll just say my preference is I I'd like to give her an opportunity to be before. She did get her application in timely. The um invitation for her to come tonight did not go out until probably, I don't know, four o'clock or so, because that's when her application got into to um Diane, so uh it wasn't a mistake of her on on her part. Um, but whatever this the privilege uh decision of the board is. And Barbara Schneider is saying that she's attended a number of the beach committee meetings.
I'm inclined to try to do a vote tonight. We also don't have Mr. Lieberfert here to interview him. It's not a regulatory board. So we're not required to do interviews. I'm happy to consider her application still as one of the six. Uh, even though we haven't interviewed her, I'm not saying she's not eligible. I'm just saying I think I can consider her without interviewing her. This is something the beach committee has asked for quite a few months. I would just like to go ahead and move on it.
And they they are uh expressed to us the urgency at hand because it's almost summertime.
Good point. Okay, so with that being said, I'll um entertain any motions for the applicants we have seen before us this evening.
I would like to move to appoint Barbara Schneider to the beach committee determining November 2021.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just think Barbara is a great volunteer and she's a good thinker and she's always uh, you know, very active and I I think she do a lot of good work.
And you always want to the busiest people, the ones who want to appoint because they get the most done.
Exactly, and she's the kind of person that's gonna do the work that all of the other members are looking for, that kind of involvement that gets things done.
Great.
No doubt about her energy level.
Right.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, seeing none? Um, by roll call, please. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown.
Brown, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay. And
Could I?
Yep.
Could I?
Nancy.
Could I move uh Nancy Quigg to be appointed to the beach committee as an alternate?
Okay.
Patterson.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this uh particular applicant?
Uh, I was gonna move Mr. Glenn because of his background as a lifeguard, but I'm not opposed to Nancy Quigg's appointment.
Anyone else?
I would echo Mr. Brown's statement, but I'm also pleased with Mrs. Uh, having Miss Quigg as our alternate. Um, as we can say, anyone who cares, you show up at the meeting, they'll put you to work also, even if you're not appointed an alternate.
And I've worked I've worked with Nancy Quigg on other committees and she is a worker. And she doesn't, she just pulls her sleeves up and gets right in the middle of it and gets stuff done. And that's what I feel I feel strongly about her.
Okay, that's good to hear.
I I had that impression about all of them, quite honestly. So I I don't think we're gonna go wrong here and really appreciate all of them, you know, putting the application in to help the town.
Absolutely, but I I just echoed Doug Doug Jones' sentiment before we vote, especially this year, especially this time of year. For folks who don't make it on this go around, attend the meetings. Just because you can't vote doesn't mean you can't assist. They are not gonna turn down um, you know, people who want to volunteer and help and there are many ways to do that. So we have a motion and a second for um, oh, go ahead, Doug.
For what you just said, unfortunately, these two members may not be able to vote either. Because the only alternates and you may not be able to tell the difference between if you show up and offer to work whether you're an alternate or not.
Yep. Great. Um, okay, motion and a second. All those in favor? Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Brown. He said Brown, aye. Sorry, you're muted.
All right, Brown, aye.
Jones.
Jones, aye.
Taylor.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great. Thank you to all the applicants. We hope to see you again if not for this committee for uh one of our many other committees are helping out in all the ways that we have uh just addressed, so thank you. Okay, next we have discussion and proposed policy recommendation regarding request for sewer connections for properties outside of existing sewer service areas. Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent, welcome, and Eric Turkington, water quality management committee. Um, as Eric is coming on, um just to set the stage here, this is a longstanding many times repeated question and subject matter that has gone on for a while. Um, and so we have uh tonight to really sort of publicly state what the uh answer is to this question for folks outside of the district that have been trying to connect. Um, and and hopefully kind of move forward from that question. So welcome, Amy, welcome, Eric. Um, and Amy, do you want to start off?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you for the introduction, Megan. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen to uh share the um IT, I need I need to um I need to be able to share my screen. If he if I can't do it, then um IT can do it for me, but it would be easier if I can do it myself.
Amy, you should be able to do it right now.
Okay.
Are you in?
Yeah.
You're here.
All right, so um can you now see my um my screen? My PowerPoint?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as Megan said, we um we do get requests to connect to the sewer from um areas that are outside the existing sewer sewer service. Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Um, so only about 11% of the developed properties in town are connected to the sewer system. Everybody else has a septic system or a cesspool. And um so we get connections from all those other, you know, from spots within that remaining 89%. Um, so this map, I know you can't read it well, but the map on the screen shows um the entire town or most of the almost the entire town and it shows that um really most of the town isn't sewered. We have an area, a small area up here, the New Silver Beach uh area that's sewed. We have a little area down here in Woods Hole. Surf Drive. Uh, Main Street, Davis Straits. And then uh most recently um Falmouth Heights and Maravista. So, excuse me, those are the areas that are currently connected to the sewer and we get a request to connect. Uh, for example, adjacent adjacent to each of those areas as well as beyond those um well beyond those areas. So we've had a number of requests to connect to the sewer right immediately outside of or near the Little Pond Sewer Service Area in Falmouth Heights. Or in um uh or at the very southern tip of Maravista. We've had a a number of requests to connect to sewer. Um, whoops, I'm sorry, I'm I keep losing you here. A number of requests um near the downtown area, near Sitters Pond and along uh Walker Street. Um, adjacent to the existing sewer in Woods Hole. And um near future planned sewer service areas. Uh, we also get requests, of course, from uh, you know, people would love to connect in areas that are nowhere near the existing sewer system. Um, and the reason people request a sewer connection is uh frequently, it's because they have a a small lot uh and or shallow depth to groundwater. Um, and if people would like to expand the development on their property uh that can be really limited by Title V if particularly if the um Title V is the septic uh system regulation. Uh, if their lot is smaller, they're shallow depth to groundwater. Uh, also if people's septic system is failing, um before spending the um enormous amount of money, it can cost to replace the septic. People contact me or um someone else in town, someone else within the town government to see if they could connect to sewer instead of spending that money on their existing septic system. Um, for many years, I have been denying uh requests to connect to the sewer from areas that are outside our existing sewer service area. Uh, so unless a property abuts a sewer collection pipe. Um, for a number of years, those um sewer connections have been denied. And, um, I'll take the rest of this time to, uh, explain that and go into the background. The wastewater system has strict capacity limitations. Uh, the biggest and the primary limit on our, um, on our wastewater system capacity is the, uh, town's very stringent groundwater discharge permit for the, um, main wastewater facility. Um, so if you can see in, uh, on my screen, can you see my cursor? Um,
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, over here, um, is the town's wastewater treatment facility and north of it are the town's, um, discharge areas. Um, the permit limits for those, uh, dis, the permit limits for that wastewater treatment plant are intended to protect the water bodies that are down gradient of our discharge. Um, so the discharge that's, uh, the treated wastewater discharge that is allowed by the permit is allocated to existing sewer areas. Uh, the sewer service areas and the flows that go to our plant were outlined in, um, the various phases of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan and were approved by the state, uh, in the plan review process. Uh, so previously, historically, there were a number of different reasons for, um, for searing in town. Um, New Silver Beach, uh, was, uh, the main plant, or the, excuse me, the New Silver Beach Plant up here in North Falmouth was, um, started up in the two thousands, uh, two thousand nine. And it was, uh, built and that sewer service area was constructed to eliminate public health issues, uh, due to septic system overflows. In Falmouth Center, uh, in the early nineteen eighties and down in Surf Drive, um, those areas were, uh, sewed also because of septic issues and because of odor and, uh, septic breakout uh, in the, in the Shiverix Pond, uh, area right, right downtown. In Woods Hole, uh, that would, the Woods Hole Sewer Collection System, which had been, uh, constructed many years earlier, was connected to our main system in the nineteen eighties to eliminate an outfall discharge uh, of virtually untreated wastewater into Great Harbor and Woods Hole. Um, so that's a little bit of the history of the kinds of things that got, uh, properties sewed in the past. Uh, the mass, uh, sewer extension regulations have changed over time. In the past, and I'm talking, say, fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, some sewer extensions were permitted upon request due to septic or other issues. Um, but now the Department of Environmental Protection, or DEP, would not support any sewer extension or connection to properties outside planned sewer service areas. The DEP does have the authority to intercede if the town does that, uh, if necessary. Um, sewer areas may only be revised via a comprehensive wastewater planning process. Uh, the current focus of searing is to improve water quality in impaired coastal ponds. Um, the goal is to reduce nitrogen load with, from the watersheds to those ponds. And the main source of nitrogen, as you all know, is septic systems. So you remove those septic systems, take that wastewater flow to the plant and treat it in order to make progress toward the total maximum daily loads set by the plant, set by the state for each estuary. Uh, the select board approach with the support and collaboration of the Water Quality Management Committee has been to address the most impacted estuaries in town first, uh, using financial, uh, windows of opportunity. Uh, this is a figure that you have, uh, I believe, seen a couple of, at least a couple of times before, but I think it is a really helpful, uh, figure to understand the challenge that the town is up against and how the Water Quality Management Committee has been setting priorities. Um, so this chart shows that the, the amount of nitrogen in kilograms per year that needs to be removed, uh, to restore each estuary according to the Massachusetts Estuaries Project. And the Mass Estuaries Project is the, um, entity that, that, um, put the, put together the data that was used to set the load limits for the town's estuaries. Um, town, the town of Falmouth has fourteen, um, coastal ponds or fourteen estuaries, and they're all impaired to one degree or another. Um, but this sort of quantifies the, the, this quantifies the amount of nitrogen that has to be removed to meet the load limits that have been established for the state. And what you can see right away is that obviously some are a lot, have, some are a lot worse off than others and have a lot more nitrogen load to be removed. These, um, five bottom, uh, ponds on the chart, which have the most nitrogen load to be removed are the, um, coastal ponds on the south side, um, on the south coast of Falmouth. Oops. Um, so, um, Little Pond, um, here is, uh, is the, the project that was completed most recently was intended to reduce nitrogen load to Little Pond. And the project that we are working on next, and that I'll talk a little bit more about, is next going to address nitrogen load to Great Pond, which is the pond that has the most nitrogen load to be reduced. That same project will also help with Green Pond. And, um, we're talking about, we're working towards the inlet widening, which will help Born's Pond. And, um, Wacoit Bay, as you can see, has, uh, the next largest amount of nitrogen to be removed. And that's, uh, considered the next priority once we can get beyond, uh, these other large, uh, south coast priorities. Um, so all of the ponds in Falmouth are impaired to one degree or another, and they will all require some sort of action in the long term. But the town has been proceeding stepwise to address the areas of, uh, greatest impairment. Uh, so just a little summary of, of the projects that have been recently completed and proposed. The Little Pond Sewer Service Area Project was completed in two thousand seventeen. That was a forty million dollar project, uh, to improve water quality in Little Pond. So again, um, if you can see my cursor here, this is Little Pond. And this is the area that was sewed to improve water quality in Little Pond. That's uh, the northeast portion of Falmouth Heights and, uh, most of the Maravista Peninsula. Um, the next thing we're working towards, uh, is wastewater treatment facility improvements. Uh, and we're proposing a two thousand twenty-two vote of twenty million dollars to accommodate the next phase of searing, uh, as well as the existing sewer service area and continue to meet the permit limits, um, for the main plant. The T-Ticket Acapuscat Sewer Service Area is, um, what's shown in, um, in yellow here, um, on this graphic. This area here is what we're calling, uh, Subarea One, which is the first area of T-Ticket Acapuscat to be sewed. And then this, this area here on Acapuscat Peninsula, um, would be the second, uh, subarea of T-Ticket Acapuscat to be sewed. And the goal of this next set of projects would be to improve water quality in Gray Pond. Um, and Gray Pond is this large pond in the middle of the figure. Um, that next phase, uh, searing Subarea One, collecting that wastewater and pumping it to the treatment plant and, um, constructing additional recharge for that, uh, area is, uh, expected to cost about sixty million dollars and is proposed for a two thousand twenty-four vote, again, to improve water quality in Great Pond. So the existing, uh, sewer service areas were very carefully delineated. Uh, they're not arbitrary. Um, the function, the, the, um, existing sewer service areas are, were in primarily intended, um, to, um, encompass the lower watershed to, uh, the, to the pond. So if you look here, this is a, um, we're zooming in on the southern portion of Little Pond. And this dark line here is the, um, watershed boundary to Little Pond in, through Falmouth Heights. Uh, so the, the sewer service area is a function of the watershed boundary, but also, um, the practicality of searing, uh, we can't build a pipe, uh, right across the watershed boundary. We have to, the sewers are generally constructed in the roads, and so you end up taking a bit of a zigzag path through the roads to get, um, the entire, uh, watershed area, um, connected to the sewer system. Um, the watershed boundary was delineated by the United States Geological Survey and was used by the state in setting the total maximum daily load for Little Pond. Um, and the, the, uh, the DEP, the state reviewed this sewer service area parcel by parcel. Um, this was not a, uh, a, a quickly settled matter. There was a lot of discussion to end up with this specific, uh, delineation. Um, parcels, um, within this, uh, within this watershed line, um, according to the USGS and according to the state, the discharge of septic effluent from parcels within the, that watershed impact the water quality within that pond. A discharge, a septic system outside of that watershed does not impact Little Pond. It does flow with groundwater. In this case, so if you're over here at the toe of Worcester, Worcester Avenue, um, you're not connected to sewer, um, and your septic effluent does end up discharging to uh, Vineyard Sound directly without affecting the coastal pond. So, um, Vineyard Sound is a lot bigger body of water than Little Pond. And, um, the, it's the, um, enclosed, the narrow enclosed shallow coastal ponds that are most affected by nutrients. So let me see what I've, I've missed anything here. So the process to expand the sewer service area now is very lengthy and expensive, and we're actually going through that process now. Once we finished with the Little Pond project, we moved, we, the town, moved forward with the next phase of planning. Uh, so the next, the, the process to expand the sewer service area is to contract with a consultant to change the comprehensive plan and the, the terminology for that. The way you do that is to prepare a notice of project change, uh, to the town's comprehensive plan. Um, the last notice of project change was submitted in December of two thousand nineteen, and that was the first step towards this next uh, Tassa or T-Ticket Acapuscat searing. That was a very big report, uh, with many appendices and it cost the town, um, that plus all the background research, uh, in that project cost the town five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The notice of project change was approved by the select board and reviewed by state agencies. The next requirement is a targeted watershed management plan uh, for, and in this case for Great Pond, and this, the, uh, budget for that right now is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once that targeted man, um, targeted watershed management plan is approved, then we will request the town fund the design and the construction and DEP, the state, will then revise the town's groundwater discharge permit to, um, allow the town to collect and discharge this additional wastewater to, uh, the identified, uh, recharge site. One thing that's led a little, led to a little bit of confusion, I think, um, in, in the public about, um, sewer capacity limitations is the Flow Neutral Bylaw. The Flow Neutral Bylaw came in to, was, um, came in, I believe it was voted in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And the, that bylaw applies to development or redevelopment within an existing approved sewer service area. So it involves a change in the nature of the use or the amount of flow, but it does not involve a change in the actual boundary of the service area. So properties outside the sewer service area cannot gain permission to connect to the sewer via a Flow Neutral Bylaw variance. Properties in the sewer service area, um, the publicly funded, funded project areas paid sewer betterments. Um, and in the plan that led to that sewer service area and in the permit, flow was allocated for, um, development of the properties within that area and even for redevelopment, uh, that's permitted by current zoning. Uh, so that the permitted flow with, for, for the area would not be exceeded quickly, uh, by permissible growth. So for example, um, there's a parcel at the corner of Worcester Court and, uh, Springbar's Road um, that has been undeveloped. It's basically a, a parking lot or paved area. Uh, that parcel was, um, it got a Flow Neutral Bylaw, Bylaw variance for, uh, potential Wendy's development there. Um, my understanding is that project may or may not be moving forward. But that parcel, um, uh, is within the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. Um, and it, a sewer stub, meaning a, a lateral pipe, was installed to the property line for that property. That property owner paid a betterment. And, um, the, the sewer service area was, um, with the flow for that sewer service area, um, took into account anticipated, um, potential flow from that site. Uh, so that's just an example of a property that has come up in this discussion. Uh, so to wrap the, wrap my presentation up, what I was, uh, recommending and requesting really tonight, uh, was that the select board adopt a policy that, um, only properties that abut a sewer collection line, i.e., and most importantly, properties that are located within an approved sewer service area are allowed to connect to the sewer. And as you can, as you, as I've explained, this is the way that I've been interpreting our situation and our commitment so far um, over the last number of years. Um, but there are, um, there's obviously a great desire to connect to the sewer in, in many different parts of town. And so I think it's, it's worth having this level of discussion, um, so that the, the board can, um, provide input and feedback on this issue.
Thank you very much, uh, Amy. I appreciate it. Um, Nancy, did you want, I saw your hand up, and then we'll hear from Eric.
I just had a quick question. Um, I guess my question was, I didn't realize that this was a select board policy issue. Because when I see that DEP would not support any sewer extension or connection to properties outside of the planned sewer service areas, how, how would we write a policy that would allow them to do that? So that was my first question. Because to me, it doesn't sound like a select board policy issue. Um, and then the second piece that, that I highlighted in your presentation was parcels within the watershed impact pond water quality. Those outside do not. So I, to me, I'm, I'm a little confused about it, the select board writing any kind of a policy that, it just doesn't seem like a select board policy issue to me.
In, in other words, yeah, I, your point as well taken, Nancy. In other words, we only have one policy that we could ever make, which is the policy that is controlled by DEP. So in other words, we could, you know, we could come up with a policy contrary, but it's, it's an illegal policy is my understanding of what, what the issue is. So
And why would we have to have a select board policy to support what DEP is telling us we can and can't do?
Amy or Eric, do you want to?
In front of us.
Um, I also see Julian. So let me, let me just say, uh, Amy, do you want to respond to that? And then Eric, if you want to unmute yourself, uh, and, and then Julian?
Uh, I think that, so I, I hear and understand what you're saying, uh, and I think there's definitely an argument for that. Um, and I've tried to make a part of that argument. Um, but I do think that we'd rather not take it to the state if we don't have to. We don't want, I'd rather this not become, um, something between the state and a, and a project proponent. I think it is something that we can resolve at the town level.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, clearly the, the policy is, as you say, dictated by the state and it's not the town of Falmouth's option to, uh, offer a different one. Uh, I think the reason it's before you frankly is that, uh, Amy has had to field and before her, Ray had to field uh, pretty persistent inquiries and, and demands, if you will, by, by people who wanted to be connected to the sewer and wouldn't take no for an answer. Uh, and I think it, it would be extremely helpful for Amy to have a policy like the one she's recommending that says, no, you can't. And, and you can't just, you won't be able to appeal to this selectman or to or to the town manager, to anybody else to try to get a different answer. The, the answer is what the state law requires and, and that is the end of the discussion. She, uh, she has had to spend a lot of time over the years dealing with folks who think they should have a sewer because they happen to live near one. And as you can see, it's a very complicated story, but, but that is the story. You, you can't.
Great. Thank you. Julian? And then Doug Brown?
Yeah, my, my suggestion to the board
Yeah, my, my suggestion to the board, uh, what Amy, uh, very, uh, very helpfully presented there in summary form is if, as Eric has indicated and Amy as well, we continue to receive some very adamant and heated and aggressive inquiries, some less so, some more so over time, uh, from individuals who insist that they have a right to do this and they want to come to the board and they want to debate it with the board. And, uh, if the board considered merely affirming the, uh, position that the DEP has taken so that we could have something in writing to, uh, share with those who continue to inquire. And I'm sure we'll get new inquiries in the next, uh, few weeks and few months. And, uh, sometimes the faces change and sometimes they don't. And we appreciate the fact that these individuals are very resolute, very concerned and very sincere, uh, but they want to move in a direction that in part, uh, Amy summarized that waiver process that we have that is, I believe, confused a number of people into thinking that because, uh, the select board can grant, uh, waivers, uh, for modest, uh, adjustments within existing service areas or properties that have already paid betterments, uh, the presumption is that you can do that anywhere in town or anybody that wants to request it. And so having something in writing to differentiate would be extremely helpful. And that's one of the things that I think we're appealing for.
Doug Brown.
So isn't it already in writing on the state DEP website? Isn't it, when I, I asked this question when we were starting the initial planning for Little Pond, why can't we sewer the houses at the end of Menon Road? Because I thought it was going to be a public health issue. And the answer at that time was DEP has already delineated the sewer service area and there's no changing it. They, they control those lines. If that's the case, there's, there's your answer. You just say it's not, it's out of our hands. We can't do anything about it. I'm concerned about our board voting a policy that says we're not going to allow it because it makes us look like the bad guys. Not that I mind that, but it just doesn't seem appropriate to me if it's a DEP controlled issue for us to be saying, we're the ones saying no. I don't understand the need for it.
Right. Or, or just, oh, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, the, the problem, uh, ever since this has arisen, it basically arose when Little Pond Sewer Service Area was, was originally being planned. And it, it's been going on ever since. Uh, the problem is that no one has said no. You know, Rick, you know, they would badger Ray and he, he would say, well, the selectmen haven't made a policy. And, uh, you know, they badger Amy and they badger the town manager. They, they will not be satisfied by being told, uh, why don't you go to the DEP website and, and see what they say? Uh, you know, they, they think the town is responsible for this and, and the town is the one they're going to badger. And, uh, it, it's, it's unproductive and, and it, for both, for both parties to have this go on. So just having a simple statement saying, here's who can hook up and here's who can't, might put this to bed, uh, for, for everybody's benefit.
I have no problem with the board being the bad guys and saying no.
I just feel like it's going to invite more debate because if we make a policy that says no, then we're going to have petitioners saying, please say yes.
We're just following the DEP already says.
Right. And so. So is that what you're asking for is a policy that support, supports what DEP has already said?
I would like to.
Or how about, I mean, I think we're getting hung up on the word policy. I mean, I think we can simply, you know, make a declaration that this board does not have the authority to, to, um, you know, grant waivers, uh, with, you know, except for in the, the, you know, we have the waiver for the, what Amy talked about for the hookups in.
Flow Neutral Bylaw.
Flow Neutral Bylaw. But aside from, from that, we are not in a position to grant those waivers because it is in, uh, contradiction to DEP regulations.
But I'm, I'm willing to say nor should we.
Right.
For all the reasons Amy just said is the, these properties are not affecting the watershed. Um, we don't have the capacity to sewer everybody. We have to draw the line somewhere and actually the line has been drawn. And I'm saying, I'm perfectly happy to say, and I stick by that line that's been drawn.
It wasn't drawn by us.
I agree, Doug.
Uh, I do want to clarify that the town has, during the planning process, the town has, um, the power to, you know, to move things in a certain direction. The town has made decisions about priorities. And so, uh, the, the, the watershed boundaries were not forced, the, the, excuse me, the exact sewer service area boundaries were not forced on the town by the DEP. The town delineated boundaries and met with the DEP and reviewed those boundaries. So I, I, I just want to be, be clear that the, the town hasn't been forced in every detail here. But, but the, once those boundaries are set through this process, then that is when, um, then it, we have committed as a town to the boundaries and the DEP is making us stick to that commitment.
Right. And I'm just reading a comment from, um, Mr. O'Reilly that when they sent an email to DEP regarding the issue, they forwarded it back to you, Amy. You know, all I can say is that that's not uncommon. It doesn't, sometimes who they send you back to doesn't mean that person has any authority. But, you know, this isn't a knock against DEP. But, you know, many state bureaucracies send folks back to their municipal, uh, agencies because, you know, that's just what they do. It doesn't mean that we necessarily have the, the power to do something different. But, um, so how would we, it does, uh, Doug Brown, did you have your hand up?
I was just, uh, this is opening the door to my next question. Then do we have the authority to choose to change those lines if we so desire?
Amy or Eric, do either one of you want to weigh in?
Yeah. So I would, I would say that, that only through the, uh, comprehensive wastewater management plan process. So what you do is what we're doing now through the planning process we're doing for the, for TASSA. You, um, you, uh, as part of a modification to your plan, you, uh, you propose a sewer service area or a change to a service area. You, if that's an expansion, which in any case it would be, you need to say where that treated, that new treated wastewater is going to go. And you need to get, uh, treated wastewater capacity for that as well as the treatment plant capacity for that. So the town would come up with that whole plan as part of a change to, uh, the comprehensive planning process and would run that to the regulators, to the town and through the regulators and get that funded and designed. So it's, it's not a, uh, it's not something that can be voted or handled individually. It is something that can only be accomplished through a, uh, formal and complicated and expensive planning process.
So ju- just correct me if I'm wrong, Amy. So yes, we can impact this when we look at projects and system changes as a whole. We cannot impact this issue on a one-off basis. So there, it's not as if the town has no control ever. We do, as we go through the process to, to sort of delineate projects, run them through DEP, et cetera. But it's project based. It's not individual based. And once that project is approved and we move forward with it, DE, with DEP, that's when those boundaries and those lines and restrictions are set and we're, we're bound to them.
Exactly.
Yes. Look, Little Pond Sewer Service Area is set. You could, you cannot add a house on any side of it to that. It's a done deal. Uh, the next one is pretty much set because it's based on watershed lines. And, uh, and that's how it goes. You, you can't, uh, fiddle around with it once the, the, the plan has been submitted and approved by the town and the state. And, and that is the case for Little Pond. And it's going to be the case very soon for Great Pond.
I'm just going to read this comment from, looks like Michael Gray. Hello, may I ask what the definition of a but is? If a property in the tow area of the heights is within 50 to 100 feet plus or minus of other homes that have been sewered, would that be consistent with the definition of a but? Thank you.
No.
No, and this, this unfortunately has been the, the, this is one of the toughest, uh, situations to address is every, every delineation, every, every sewer service area is a line that goes, you know, uh, there's, there are houses on one side of it and there are houses on the other side of it. And houses on one side are in, houses on the other side are out. So, uh, a, a but, when I say that it abuts a sewer main, what I mean is that, um, the, the property itself, um, the property itself, um, is adjacent to a sewer line in the street. So not 50 feet from one in one direction or another, but the sewer line is in front of your house. Uh, and you can connect to it via a, a stub that was left there. It perhaps is better to talk about the defined sewer service area than the, than the, um, uh, abutting of height itself. It is perhaps clearer. Um.
Can we look at the motion? I'm sorry, excuse me. Can we look at the motion again? I just want to see what the wording is. I could.
Yep, I'll, I'll bring it back up. Um, yeah, perhaps I should, um, change it to just refer to the sewer service area. So I said that a but a sewer collection line. Um, the.
I think you're best off dropping a but.
Or if it just says only, only properties that are within the established.
Sewer service area.
Sewer service area or permitted, whatever the word is you want to say.
It works. As approved by DEP.
As approved by DEP are allowed to connect to the sewer.
That works. I wouldn't say DEP.
Okay.
I would say approved by, by our comprehensive water, uh, by our plan.
Right. So our, so it's our plan that is approv- approved by, uh, MEPA, the, the state, um, environmental review agency. So yes, it's our plan. And, and Doug, I appreciate that because that, um, it is really the town sticking with its, its own plan.
Okay.
But you could add as approved by DEP.
How about the state? Can I say as?
The state. That's fine.
All right, fine.
I understand it's a different agency. We're getting hung up on DEP, but.
Okay.
Okay, state approved. Okay.
And maybe sometime in the future when we have all the disposal options that we need and we can afford to go back and take another look at this, maybe we'll consider it. But right now it's not really practical.
Well, it's not even practical. It's the limits that we're facing.
Right.
And I, I, if I could ask a question, I mean, as long as Eric is there, what's our prospects for expanding our dis- our discharge capacity?
Well, we're, we're going to need to do that, uh, in order to accommodate the flow that we're contemplating from, uh, the TJ Akapescut area. Uh, we, at the board's direction, we've been looking at a, a few sites and weighing the pros and the cons of, of them. We'll, we'll be bringing forward a plan to you within the year. Uh, identifying those sites and the pros and the cons and, and the recommendations. All of them have issues, uh, but, you know, we, we'll find one that's going to work and it's, uh, the cost will be what it's going to be. But, uh, that, that'll be in the next six months, uh, certainly within the year. But it's, it's not ready for prime time right now. But it, it has to be done if we're going to accommodate any more flow from any new sewer service areas because the existing flow, uh, the existing sites pretty well u- use up all the existing flow.
Great. Thank you. So here, so here's the motion that Amy has. Just for you to take a look at this, we don't anticipate that in any way. This, um, this doesn't run counter to our Flow Neutral Bylaw policy. Right? Okay.
It does not.
Okay.
Again, the Flow Neutral Bylaw, um.
No, I, I, I understand that it's for those limit. I just want to make sure that the public understands that the two things are separate and, and, you know, one doesn't negate the other. So.
Did you want me to call this something besides a policy?
Well, it's a policy.
It's a policy.
Okay. It's a policy. All right. All right. So this is the motion. We have only properties located within a state-approved sewer service area are allowed to connect to the sewer. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Should there be, should there be any language added to say that at this time expansion of, uh, sewer service areas are not under consideration or anything like that?
No.
I don't know. Cause we are kind of considering every, you know, we're considering a lot of possibilities as we try to figure out what, where we go next. So I don't think our policy has to have that level of, of detail about what's coming next. I think we're just trying to put this issue to rest, bring some education to it, some clarity to it so that folks understand it is, it's not going to happen. We understand the frustration. I get it. It's a lot of money to address some of these issues. And, you know, I, I, I will say for some of those homeowners, I applaud them for really recognizing the benefit of searing. Uh, you know, I get it. It's just that we, we have to make choices about how we do these. The money isn't unlimited. So, um, I don't think we have to kind of talk about what comes next because that isn't part of this policy.
All right. Thanks.
Patterson, second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none by roll call, please. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Low, uh, sorry. I'm reading everybody across my screen. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Eric. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Sorry about the overload.
Yeah.
Isn't it interesting that here we are having people begging us to connect to the sewer. But what before, when we were proposing the Little Pond Sewer Service Area.
Tough sell, right?
Everybody was fighting it.
Yep. So I, 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 uh, you know, hopefully we'll be able to, they'll, they'll come a day where we can, uh, you know, really include a lot more folks in that because it is.
Yeah.
Value. We, we've seen, I think people have seen the value and the benefits.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you both very much. Appreciate you bringing this to us. Okay. Next we have presentation from AMP Energy and potential lease agreements related to Town Meeting Article 21. Welcome, Mr. Turner.
Hi, Evan. How are you?
Well, ma'am.
Welcome. So, um, go right ahead. The floor is yours. I don't know if you need to screen share.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll start off just, you know, uh, talking. And I'll, I think we'll roll into a quick presentation to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
And then just show you guys around where our thoughts are. So I was looking to talk to the board after talking, uh, earlier this week to Doug that, uh, about, well, we've talked to the planning board about Articles 21 and 22 with the potential solar array, uh, up on the Cape Cod Country Club. So, you know, mostly it's an icebreaker meeting greet, you know, put a face to the name. Uh, because, yeah, I expect you'll be hearing, you know, a fair bit about it around town. So I will, uh, I am, I guess for the relationship wise, the developer is AMP Energy. Uh, you can find them at AMP dot energy. They're a large multinational owner operator who works with someone like me, uh, to, uh, who is local to Massachusetts. And, uh, we invest in the sites and develop them and AMP carries them forward, hopefully for the indefinite future. Uh, we ended up, uh, being in, put in touch with the owners of the property. Uh, and what is, I guess, not apparent based on the articles is that the property was going to go on the market for sale. Uh, they were looking at housing feasibility. Uh, the property and the country club is about 150 acres and has more than a mile of street frontage. So, you know, housing was the initial thought, of course, because that's what's allowable in the district. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Bob Amant and that firm put, uh, David, the seller, in touch with AMP and myself. Uh, and it has blossomed from there. We are looking for bylaw amendments to put it in the overlay district. And that's Amendment 22. And the more, I guess, one that's gotten a lot more discussion is Amendment 21, where we are looking to empower the planning board to have the ability to have a little leeway on the tree clearing because it can get you a lot if there's some flexibility. Their first bylaw and the current bylaw was written, you know, sort of to accommodate the project on Blacksmith Shop Road that's in a sand pit. So some of their screening requirements and some of the setbacks against conservation land weren't, uh, I think, a done product. Yeah, you can evolve past your first edition. And I think that we can demonstrate that it's got a lot of benefits to being able to have that flexibility. So I will screen share here and just walk through. Let's see, we need screen number three. All right. And everyone has a PowerPoint up on their, uh, screen. And everyone has a PowerPoint up on their, uh, screen right now. Is that a, can I get a thumbs up?
Yes.
Everyone.
Yep, you're good.
So this is an example of, you know, we got the country club here. Uh, you have the main parcels, the west, the east and the south look pretty much as this is fairway, what the project might look like if you are just the overlay district, but nothing else. Which is more or less working in the fairways, but with some weird items like all things out here, no screening required. Uh, just set back a hundred feet. Whereas we're working here in this fairway next to these neighbors, but we're not using the cleared land on the very, very backside of the property. So some of those things we thought we could evolve on with, you know, the town and the board's support. And that's how we've gotten down to something that looks, uh, and acts a bit bigger, but has far more protections for the neighbors. That previous version would let us cut down two acres per property. This gives us a maximum of six acres per property. But is, you know, on the, for instance, down here is about four and a half. This one's about five and that one's about six. But it gives the board some leeway to do that in exchange for significant tree planting. And the big thing you'll hear about us doing this with amongst other benefits is that if we can get the bylaw amendments, we're going to be able to purchase the property from David instead of leasing it for the smaller array. Which is still significant. Don't get me wrong, it's great work, it's big work, it's exciting. But that's a good array. This is a great array. And having more megawatts will give us the ability, megawatts of solar will give us the ability to be able to afford the land. And very similar to something we're doing in Kettuitt Road in Sandwich with a project we're going to get into construction this year and we're working on the lease with Sandwich right now. Once we buy a piece of land, it makes all the sense in the world to give it to the town straight out. Because if we're going to hold it for forty years for under a lease to ourselves, we might as well donate it. And that worked out very well in Sandwich because we're donating the entire nineteen acre property there and, you know, some other land around town right into the town's hands. And they get to conserve it long term. So what we would be proposing to the town under this scenario is that when we get all of our permits and we get to the point where we would exercise article twenty-one's additional leeway, that would be after we get permits, Cape Cod Commission's good interconnection to the substation, which is right here, very close, uh, would work out. We would talk with the town and negotiate a lease that you guys would inherit along with the donation of the property. And then you guys have the property outright, free and clear going forward, and it's your business. What happens with it outside of, of course, the lease area we would put together for the solar array. You know, we've had a lot of folks really interested in how we would orchestrate that and what we can do with the extra land. It's about a fifty-fifty split, as I show here, that about half the acreage of the one fifty, which I'll show you in a second, is solar array, half becomes conservation. The idea behind the amendment is that we plant about twice as many trees as we cut down, or at least twice as many acres of forest land, to use the bylaws terminology. And then I think we've got plenty of room here to, you know, angle at some other stuff. Uh, you know, uh, I believe last mine, we talked with the, uh, the town staff. They were thinking of, they would be nice to tuck in a little bit of affordable housing uh, on the campus. And I think we've got a spot that, again, it's the town's judgment if they were going to have the land, exactly how to orchestrate the conservation and use of the land so long as it conformed with our planting and replanting mitigation for our cut acres. So I'll send this, you know, this, uh, presentation to you, uh, afterwards, just so you can prove it at your own time. But here is a little more complex of just a, a two-color mock-up of the solar arrays as proposed. So it's about twenty-seven megawatts across three main properties. You see the properties, like for instance, here, that's a property outline. All of the trees around the majority of this property are town of Falmouth conserved land. Everything to the north and east, everything in the middle, residential zones, what isn't a house is town of Falmouth owned. Same thing with everything out here and all the woods in between these houses, as well as this parcel to the outside. So we think this makes a really excellent target for contribution and conservation in combination with the solar, sort of a purchase and conserve plan. We get some better treatment with the solar program because they love land being held by public entities. So that works us out for us as well. And one of the biggest draws that, the reason we got to this point and this idea is that we worked extensively with the Coonamessit Pond Association, you know, whose neighbors are all along the pond. Some, the small pond, Coonamessit Pond, some folks over here, as well as some deep pond folks, uh, got involved. And they were overwhelmingly supportive of the idea that if we can cut down twelve more acres of trees in the bylaw allows right now, if we donate, if we get the whole property conserved, it has an incredibly sustaining effect on the quality of the water in the pond and the general water quality across Falmouth to keep locking up land that never goes into housing type development in that circumstance. So the areas you see in, in the squiggly orange lines are effectively a tree line around the array. Of course, the entire area around it is wooded. The blue areas are where array would be hosted. And the blocky orange areas are very approximate areas of the twenty-ish acres we would be expecting to replant. It's probably more than twenty, but we'll use twenty as a round number. So some notes with the purchase concept. Uh, we would be purchasing some area over here, which is actually business zone. We'd be conserving all the land on the edge of the pond right up here, as well as effectively, while this is pretty open right now, we'd be making the middle a treed corridor about two hundred and fifty feet wide, including Fox Ferry Hill Road that runs right down the middle. As well as we're looking at replanting the fourth hole and the fifth hole and part of the sixth hole. Again, to use effectively every square foot we don't use for solar becomes conservation in some direction. Generally replanting, but there's a lot of work with the ecology folks to do in the event we get there. In the event that we only get article twenty-one, twenty-two passed, which is the overlay district, we would be looking at a lease and just using the fairways, which would come with none of the other replanting offset obligations. Uh, to just play with this a little bit to give you some perspective, I'll turn the array on in the blue area. Technically three arrays, one per property. And we can zoom around the array a little bit and kind of get some scale. So these are, you know, like a fifty-foot tree line. Keep in mind, everything in here is already treed. I just don't want to make it too busy to see. We've got a big whopping solar array over here. You know, almost twice the size of the other version. Some batteries, big part of solar now, just mopped up, you know, in one little color. And you see it just creates a large arena of trees that we can work in. And it becomes just large solar arrays. I believe, you know, to the best of my knowledge, this will be the largest solar array campus. And these two, probably the largest individual arrays in Cape Cod, which I am, you know, very excited and proud about. And you, I, I think there's just a way to do a lot of good work here and replant, obviously, a whole lot of forest and balance conservation and development and very important for my Coonamessit Pond folks. Uh, you know, keep this land from being chopped up for parts, uh, relative to a housing development. I think the owners have definitely made a very large commitment to not going housing if it works out well. Uh, you know, they could have certainly made a whole bunch of house lots with relatively low work for this size property, uh, but they, they really did like the idea of this becoming renewable. Uh, and it contributes, you know, I mean, a very, very significant needle moving. Probably talking a sixth to a seventh of Falmouth's total electricity usage would be covered by this array when it would be built. So it really moves the needle, getting your town to being effectively carbon neutral. Obviously, you don't directly apply the megawatts of the generation to your town because the electricity goes everywhere. But so far as generating in your town as much as your town uses, this gets you a lot of the way there and is really quite a significant move. Uh, I think over the coming weeks, you will hear about, you know, the folks we talked to committee-wise, uh, you know, putting out letters of support as we work through this plan because we have by no means gotten to this plan by ourselves. It has been extensive discussions with the Coonamessit Pond Association, multiple meetings with folks like the Energy Committee and other, you know, specific and, you know, very often very uh, educated and knowing, uh, individual citizens who might have an, an angle here or there on, you know, some part of this process. And the last note, uh, oh, uh, for, I think Julian liked this item. We were thinking of affordable housing to go up here, north of the, uh, eighteenth and seventeenth holes. Uh, in the event we purchase it, we'll probably demolish the condo to keep the big array going. And then we would, I would suggest, although it's ultimately up to the town, that you might look at some street side items here. Uh, excellent net zero, fully, you know, wrapped houses with solar on the roofs, of course. Uh, that can be affordable and sustainable at the same time. You know, and there's got, you know, when you donate a hundred and fifty acres, you got to think there's five or plus acres you could put towards something like that. You know, that kind of balances out the site going from, you know, normal golf course management, which is not, you know, nothing by any means on the chemical nitrogen side, uh, into a large pollinator wildflower meadow, which is certainly far more natural, especially considering, we think this really dovetails well into the crane wildlife areas to the east and to the north that, you know, excel in a field habitat for that kind of ecology. The last note is that you may hear us, you know, talking about there is a possibility and a new part of the solar program. And this is a very long conversation to be had in the future that gives the towns the ability to operate the array with us, doing the local work through like a renewables manager locally. That gives the array better treatment under the smart program and can result in a lot better value for the town if they want to engage on us with the operations, the local operations of the array. It's a really interesting new thing the D U E R has made. Uh, they govern the solar program, they're the Department of Energy Resources. It's still very much in development for how a local town performs the operations of the local, the local operations of the array. Uh, but it's not, it's, you know, if I had something that gave you guys a bit more input, more certainty over time, uh, better oversight over the array's operations and better revenue, I like to think it's something we at least want to talk about. Certainly don't know if it's something we want to do, but it gets us down the road. Uh, and with that, I will pause and end my monologue and I appreciate everyone's time. Certainly happy to run through any questions, uh, as desired.
Great, thank you, Evan. Um, any questions? Go ahead, Sam, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Um, I, I actually had a, a question from a citizen yesterday. Uh, what would be the net loss of tree acreage with this project? So after, after your mitigation.
After mitigation?
Yes.
Oh, then you'll gain trees after mitigation. Uh, in theory, we'd be cutting down approximately sixteen. I believe last my math, may, let's call it eighteen for be sure.
Acres?
Eight, yes, or eighteen acres cut, but we would be replanting twenty-four. So a net gain of six acres overall.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Doug Brown?
We talked about this at our Falmouth Water stewards, uh, meeting and there was quite a bit of support for it. And, uh, Chris Neal, who's pretty good with figures, said that if we wanted to have Falmouth be completely, uh, sustainable and, uh, energy neutral, we'd need five of these. That's an interesting point. Um, I think also there was comments at that meeting that the tree cutting is not really exceptional habitat. It's in between the fairways and it's kind of marginal. And the improved plantings in the other areas, which is contiguous with forest, would maybe be more beneficial. So it was pretty beneficial. I have to admit, I spoke against this at the planning board, just commented, you know, I wasn't very aware of the, all the logistics and that's why I suggested to Mr. Turner to come here and, and speak about this, just to increase my knowledge and the public's knowledge.
Yep, great, thank you. Uh, Nancy, go ahead.
There's a question in the chat from Ms. Scott Price. Does Evan have any idea of how many affordable homes or units would fit in the areas described?
Not being a home builder, I would say I do not. Give me just one second, uh, and I will get you an idea of the acreage there that fits on that area.
I think you had said something around five.
I mean, I would guesstimate five. I see it being, you know, there's at least one and a half acres to the north there. That's part of the current golf course and condo property. So I think it, it really becomes entirely up to what the town would like to install. That's not something that I think we would lead. It's the question of, you know, uh, what do you want to set back and how far from, how much acreage do you want? I think you've got years to look at that and, uh, play with it in the event that we can pull it off.
Thank you. And Karen Bissonette is noting that the town usually recommends four per, per acre. So obviously, it's not going to depend on what type of units, what, you know, there, there's lots of iterations there. Um, but nice to think about, start thinking about that. Um, um, okay, any other questions for Mr. Turner while we have him?
I have a question about the, the term of lease. Should the, uh, both the articles be successful? And we end up getting into negotiations with AMP Energy about the lease? Is, would it be a hard cap at the forty years or would there be some incentives to extend? How would that work?
So typically our leases run forty to fifty, depending on the owner. But you could always extend past. That's really a question of how you guys want to set up the property. You know, if you choose to have a hard cap, we'll of course be fine with forty. But I'd like to think you set it up to where the next generations can make the decision. And if you want to keep it running, that makes all the sense in the world, you keep going. And when it makes sense to not run it anymore, you guys have the land presumably for conservation, but that's not really my call. I think it makes a lot of sense, but you know, it becomes a big meadow or just town on land or open space or what have you. I think we're very confident these things will run for thirty-five right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, we really appreciate it. I know there are a lot of folks, um, who just, you know, haven't really, they, they know the article is coming, but didn't have a lot of information behind it. So we appreciate you, um, sharing that tonight, kind of jumpstarts, um, kind of that public, more of that public discussion, which is always great. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
And for your awareness, I believe, we are going to send out some notices to the rep, town voters, the representative voters, as well as anyone else who wants to join. And we'll probably hold several Zoom meetings like this.
Great.
Because just, you know, more time to give context and ask questions. We've typically found people, you know, you just don't have it in the amendments. You just, you see changes and you wonder why. Uh, and I think, you know, the benefits that those kind of flexibility give, you know, to get that difference between half the energy and no conservation to twice the energy and, you know, a big conservation can be really valuable. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you. Okay, great. Now we have discussion on designation of the local option portion of the short-term rental tax to Affordable Housing Fund. Welcome, Peter. I think, are you gonna kind of take us through this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
This is an agenda item that was brought forth at the request of Doug Brown. And, uh, Doug is in communication with, um, a number of our affordable housing advocates as our member of the, as our many of the board members, probably all of you. Um, and Doug specifically asked that we schedule a discussion with the board of the local option for the short-term rental tax. Um, so the local option for the short-term rental tax and how that might be applied for affordable housing. And I do have just a couple of slides to run through. There we go. So just to start with, to place this in context, uh, the looking at the, the local options for the short-term rental tax, uh, in the context of the room occupancy tax, there are multiple components of the room occupancy tax. The board members will probably recall, we went through these, uh, in adopting a, a couple of provisions. Um, actually, it was, it was a, uh, provision to increase the local rooms tax that was made available to municipalities and the board supported putting that. And the board supported putting that before the voters and it was approved for an effective date of July 1. So just starting from the beginning, the, the rooms tax includes a state portion, the state collects 5.7%. Municipalities can collect anywhere from zero to 6% really. If they adopt a local rooms tax at all, it starts at 4%. And then the municipalities have an option to increase that 4% up to 6% in Falmouth. Through the town meeting vote effective July 1. Sorry, effective January 1st, 2020. Increased that percentage from 4% to 5%. That vote took place in a time when the state had also of its own accord, without any local option. Added a new water improvement tax of 2.75%. That applied across the board to all traditional hotels and motels in addition to short term rentals. And so the, that and briefly, as the board is aware, just for the public's. For the public's knowledge, the water improvement tax is a Capewide fund that is used for wastewater improvements. So the piece that we're focused on tonight is a community impact fee. This is a local option that municipalities can adopt up to 3% and it applies only to short term rentals. Within that local option, there are two components. The town may choose to exclude short term rentals that are operator, that are within. Units that are operated by the owner. So. There, there are professional, there's a definition of professionally managed units within the local option. And the town can choose to only apply the short term rental tax to those professionally managed units. And it appears that that would be a very small portion of the short term rental tax. That we have been collecting, but that is an option that, that the town would face if it chose to adopt that 3%. Community impact fee local option. So that, this local option that exists under the Massachusetts general law. Comes with a requirement that at least 35% of the revenue must be earmarked for affordable housing or. Local infrastructure projects. The town could elect to earmark up to 100% toward affordable housing or local infrastructure projects. The adoption process does require a town meeting vote as, as. As it did when we increased the base rooms tax fee from 4% to 5%. And then the expenditure of those funds once collected also requires an appropriation. The, I believe the concept that Doug Brown was bringing forward was that these funds would be. Appropriated to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund for expenditure on affordable housing projects. So how much money are we talking about? Forecasting this new revenue is challenging for a couple of reasons. It was actually a little bit challenging just to get our, just to get the data on what past collections have been on short term rental tax. I think I glossed over it, but the effective July 1, 2019, among those changes. Was expanding the rooms tax to include these short term rentals. So since July 1 of 2019, the town has been receiving the rooms tax applied to those short term rentals. However, when we receive our quarterly distributions from the state, it's not broken out. Between the traditional hotel motel collections and the short term rental tax collections. So until this morning, we really didn't know what those short term rental collections looked like. We, we did get those, we did get a, some figures from the state. They have now begun just in the past, this calendar year, I believe. Have, have started formally tracking the short term rentals separately. From the traditional hotel motel revenues. But we also did get an estimated breakout going back to July 1, 2019. And in short, that short term rental tax collection for the fiscal year 2020 equates to approximately. Or I should say, if we applied the 3% community impact fee. To the short term rentals for fiscal 2020, that would equate to approximately $350,000 for that year. Now, I mentioned that it's difficult to forecast these, these revenues. Because this has been a strange year. Effective January of 2020, the rooms tax rate changed from 4% to 5% for Falmouth, as I mentioned. The short term rentals were included in the rooms tax for the first time July 1 of 2019. So that's the beginning of FY 20. And then we had the pandemic. So to compare all the changes that took place in FY 20. To FY 19 and FY 18 and try to get a, you know, a really good handle on what those revenues are going, going to be going forward is very challenging. So again, the best way I can summarize it, FY 20 was not a typical year. We were advised that the short term rentals in particular were extremely high across the board on Cape Cod. So that $350,000 figure may well be greater than what we might receive in a typical year going forward. But that's the one sort of true data point that we have. What are the other towns doing? So on the Cape, there is no other town that has adopted this community impact fee. In fact, there are only 16 municipalities in the Commonwealth that have adopted the community impact fee. And they are on the screen for you here, it's a somewhat eclectic group, Amherst, Arlington, Boston, Gloucester, Northampton, Swambskett, Webster. So those are the communities that have adopted it so far. And that's, that's really it. I think I wanted to note that. You know, this is an opportunity for a new revenue source that could be dedicated earmarked, if you will, for affordable housing. What we are not talking about, and I think I can speak for the town manager and finance director and myself, I hope we are not going to talk about. Redirecting existing revenues for affordable housing, only because, you know, we've. We've presented a balanced budget for the next year and that balanced budget takes into account all of the revenues that we now collect, including the short term rental tax. So that the base 5% that the town collects on hotels and motels, as well as the short term rentals. That's part of the, the revenue estimates and assumptions that the FY 22 proposed budget incorporates. And with that, I will take your questions.
Thanks Peter, appreciate it. Go ahead Doug.
Well, actually Peter, I did not initially anticipate the community impact fee adding. I wouldn't want to be the first town on the Cape to, to add that. And I was actually intending to try to earmark the amount of increase that we've had since adopting the Airbnb. And just kind of look at our history and say, if our rooms tax has been bringing us a million dollars a year and now it's 1.3. Then we could kind of scale and use that 300,000 that's additional. To start to contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund. That was my initial concept of this.
Julian, I don't know if, I don't know if the town manager wants to comment on that. I, I hear what you're saying Doug, I apologize if we misunderstood what you were suggesting. You know, we did look at your email and we thought, you know, we had taken it directly from your email. You had written local option for the short term rental tax, but.
Right.
No, understood. And that's certainly something the board can talk about. Again, it does, it raises concerns for us in terms of those revenues already being part of the balanced budget plan.
Understandable.
Any other, go ahead Sam.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize that the housing production plan that was done for us. Recommended a certain number of units per year and we're falling far short of that. I think we're at best getting to about three quarters of the amount that's recommended to try to get back to a equitable balance. So that people that work in town can live in town. Right now, the salaries just do not support coming here, working here. And purchasing a home and being able to support it and maintain it. So, I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us to look for ways to subsidize housing. So that young people can come here, can raise families and can afford to have a home here. And I just want us to look for every option that we can to try to cut down on the cost of, of home building. So that, and they, and they will be deeded affordable for the entire life of that property. So there is a protection to make sure that it doesn't get lost to the normal market rates.
And I want to say, oh, go ahead Julian, I already spoke.
I don't need to interrupt Doug, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I do have a cottage that I rent on Airbnb. And, you know, all of the springtime, we couldn't rent because of the travel restrictions and, you know. So the fact that the revenue is up, that came later, after the restrictions were relaxed and we had. Some other states that were compatible and not restricted. And when that started to lift, people did start to come and it has since become busy. But actually revenues were off because of the pandemic affecting the traveling in the spring. So it's, I think. We're being conservative when we say that if, if we're up 300,000, I think was mentioned in the previous. I think I'd like to try to target the increase and track it. And I know that's tricky and we would be estimating and scaling, but that was my first thought and I'd be welcome. The board members of whether we should consider the local option, the increased community impact fee or if this is a good idea.
I'm very much in favor of looking at the community impact fee. And I know, I think Doug, you mentioned you're reluctant to be the first one on the Cape. But the impact that Falmouth is feeling from the increase of Airbnbs, I think is substantial. And I think just us to be able to financially benefit from that as a town is worth investigating. And certainly I could see that fee, that what we take in going to affordable housing. And maybe, as you're saying, plus a little bit more, but I'm not sure I'd go all the way to that, the $300,000 figure you mentioned. As the increase from what's gone up the past year, but certainly I would like to see the impact fee going in that direction.
Julian and then Nancy.
I just wanted to, just to note that, of course, this is a very important purpose, affordable housing, that's. Why do you recognize and certainly affirm that? Just wanted to enter a note of caution on the. Potentially utilizing existing revenues that are part of what we've anticipated in the upcoming fiscal year 22 budget. There is some uncertainty as to what, exactly what those revenues are. But I only want to introduce a note of caution to the board. That were you to consider defunding or removing or reassigning some of that funding for other purposes. That it's going to have an impact potentially on existing programs and municipal operations in. Various town departments, capital spending, et cetera. So I just wanted to introduce a note of caution there. That does not mean that it does not merit exploring, we're happy to explore that with the board. But in terms of what's presented here, additional community impact fee, as has been noted. There's an additional burden to the town by this proliferation and expansion, which we seem to be experiencing. On Airbnbs and seasonal housing. And utilizing some of that revenue to. Really approach the affordable housing issue, which we all recognize is so critical, is really what this enabling legislation is all about. So happy to be part of that dialogue, we just want to introduce some caution on revenues that would. Be available to continue to support ever escalating costs in our basic municipal services.
Thanks Julian. Nancy?
And I think the caution is a good one. I think where I get stuck is that we talk about supporting affordable housing and it being one of our goals. And I feel like I've heard that over and over again. But I think what we might want to do is, is. Think about how could we support it more effectively? How could we, how could we in some respects put our money where our mouths are? We talk about affordable housing all the time. But is there a way to look at how we budget so that we could. Be creative and come up with ways to support affordable housing. It just, we talk about it all the time, what can we do to, to support it? And how can we come up with resources to really put money towards something that is so important to us and so important to this community?
And also to think, I think, you know, the, the other issue is not just the numbers piece of it, right? But sort of the, the strategy of how we're going to tackle this. And it can come, we can come at it from, you know, many different angles, but. You know, doing it piecemeal, one proposed project at a time, it's, it's just kind of really painful, right? I mean, we, we spend so much time sometimes on, you know, these long debates about. You know, we just had one not too long ago, about maybe four potential units. And it's just, you know, we're just chipping away at something that really needs a much broader stroke to carve into it and make a real difference. So. So anyway, I mean, that's just a broader piece beyond the funding. I think we have to have a. I don't want to call it a master plan because it's not really, that's not the appropriate terminology, but a broader. You know, sort of plan and strategy for how we address it.
I think that sounds like a good agenda item for a joint meeting with the planning board.
Yeah, or and affordable housing.
Well, the affordable housing is behind it, that's not the issue. The ones that you're talking about is where and in what form.
Well, let's consider this a meeting to just kick off the conversation about whether or not we want to consider this. Community impact fee or, and maybe we can try to start tracking the, the revenue from the, the short term rentals. Because personally, I feel like the, the revenue that comes from it is new revenue. And I know we're being advised to be cautious, but it is new revenue and I think it should be a dedicated. Source of funding to combat the problem that it creates, which is the, the Airbnbs create a shortage of rentals. And so I think it should be the source of funding to offset that impact. Even whether or not we add an additional fee. And maybe next year we'll consider the community impact fee. I'd like to see at least us designate a couple hundred thousand dollars a year from this revenue source. To try to start supplementing, because right now we're only using CPC funds and it takes a while. Twice a year to fund it and it seems like we're always struggling to keep that, that fund up there, ready to go.
Okay, so is that something that you feel this board can do now or we need some way in from?
I don't think we're really ready to do it now. I think this is just the beginning of the conversation and we haven't really given the staff appropriate. Chance to really evaluate where we're at.
So come back to it, have Jennifer join us and, and kind of talk a little bit more about some of the nuts and bolts of, of. What we're discussing here, does that make sense?
And we'll get a little more chance to understand what the state, where we, numbers are showing us.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to add another option that the board can consider as part of the menu. Is, we do have that 1% room to, to grow, if you will. So another, another percent to add to the entire rooms tax, not just short term rental. And that could generate significant, you know, you're probably talking on the order of three to $400,000 a year if the town. Chose to increase the rooms tax applicable to all hotels, motels and short term rentals. And you could as a policy matter dedicate that to the, to affordable housing.
The one thing I would, I would just caution is, and I know sometimes we can't capture all of it, but. Sometimes raising those rates on those traditional places sends folks to, you know, get Airbnb or VRBO. But not sort of through the proper channels, right? So then we, we, we're hurting some of our, our community businesses, you know, some which are, I mean, my sister and her. Her husband, they don't own it any longer, but they, they ran the Tides Motel for many years. It's a 29 room establishment. So, you know, a bump up there for smaller businesses can be really tight and push some people. To do those rentals that maybe not even captured in that, maybe very informal, not captured within. And so, you know, the, the smaller businesses suffer a little bit and then we kind of lose out anyway. So I do think a broader discussion, you know, would be helpful where we get some way in, particularly having just come off COVID. And hotels were hit really hard because for a long time they really, you know, last summer, they were not in the place where rentals were. A lot of folks. know, last summer, they were not in the place where rentals were. A lot of folks, I mean, Doug maybe didn't rent his place because he was abiding by the rules. But we know there were lots of folks who rented out their second homes here, even when, you know, there were some provisions against that. And and the hotels were really just kind of closed for for a long time. So I'd like to.
Imagine they did because we were getting a lot of requests and we had to turn away.
You were saying no, and we saw lots of, you know, visitors from other places. So, so maybe we can have that for an upcoming agenda to kind of get some way in. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Peter. Thanks, Julian.
And thanks for putting all the information together. I appreciate it.
And thank you, Doug, for raising that. Okay, next, we have consider approve proposed ballot question for May twenty twenty-one municipal ballot. This is the issue for T ticket. Julian, do you want to just walk us through that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we've had a request from the the school department. And also, this has been reviewed by Finance Director Jennifer Mullen. And we've been worked with Town Council on it. This would be for a roof replacement for T ticket school. They're pursuing, exploring MSBA funding. And we have a pretty good indication of a portion of MSBA funding for its potential reimbursement of that substantial cost. Anytime, obviously, you replace a school roof, it's significant. This would be placed upon the upcoming May municipal ballot with the suggested ballot language that's in your board packet that, again, has been reviewed with Town Council and with the Finance Director Jennifer Mullen. And we'd ask the board to consider voting to place that suggested ballot language on in May in support of the schools and this T ticket roof replacement that would need your approval to do so.
Any questions from the board? Oh, go ahead, Julian, then Sam.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just overlooked. I was going to mention, I apologize. This was an item the board may recall on the anticipated draft agenda for the joint meeting with the school committee, which unfortunately was not able to go forward. So you've been, this would have been discussed in advance of this evening, had that been able to go forward. So I just wanted to mention that may sound like it's coming out of the blue, only because that meeting had to, unfortunately, be rescheduled.
Right. Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Sam?
I just want to mention that when we re-roofed the Lawrence Building, MSBA funds kicked in thirty-five percent of that cost. That just is a sort of a a number to recognize. I mean, the town gets a good deal when they essentially maintain their schools well. And T ticket school is one of our older schools.
Yep. Thank you. Any other discussion from the board?
I'm just glad that they have made roofing shingles in a uniform fashion now that they all have this extended lifetime because that roof that we just put on that school twenty, twenty and twenty years ago is such a shame. We could have bought a longer life shingle and would have been more wise. So we're lucky that that's forced upon us by the industry now. They're all the same.
Yeah, good. Hopefully get a little bit longer life out of it.
It'll be more like fifty years at least.
That's good. Okay, next, we have, so we have to vote this. Consider, do we have to vote it? Consider approve? So I guess approve is another word for vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any synonyms?
We need to vote to get it on the ballot.
Okay. So Sam, do I have a motion from you to do that?
Indeed, you do.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, great. Let me read these off. I will read them. Doug Brown, if you will second them, and then we'll vote them. And I'm just going to do them all at once. Oh, go ahead, Doug.
I just want to make a comment. We had a comment from Anjali Scott Price that she, on a previous, our previous conversation about the rooms tax, she is chairing a working group on the Affordable Housing Committee, currently researching revenue options to support Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. And we plan to submit our findings at the next Affordable Housing Committee meeting. So that will be helpful in our conversation going forward. So thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Sussa.
I just wanted to confirm what the board just voted was the language that was in your packet.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Just wanted to be certain of that. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. Okay, we have approved twenty twenty-one annual seasonal license renewals. I'll do them all at once and then.
Megan, before you go on, should we read that language just so it's in the record? I don't know that we actually did. And I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, go right ahead, Sam. So the language that we will approve is as follows.
Shall the town of Falmouth be allowed to exempt from the pre-provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to replace the roof for the T ticket elementary school?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. All alcohol restaurant license, Falmouth Pier Thirty-seven Boathouse, eighty-eight Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, Falmouth Raw Bar, fifty-six Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, Landfall Restaurant, nine Luskum Avenue, Woods Hole, Quicks Hole Toqueria, six Luskum Avenue, Woods Hole, Shuckers, ninety-one A Water Street, Woods Hole, all alcohol club license, Seaco Shore Association, Incorporated, seven Fairview Lane, Falmouth, Common Victoror License, Yulinda, six thirty-four West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Jim's Clam Shack, two twenty-seven Clinton Avenue, Falmouth, The Blended Berry, fifty-six Davis Straits, Falmouth, The Village Cafe, six thirty-four West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth.
Second.
Okay, all those by roll call.
Just a one discussion?
Yes.
Just because in the past, we did have some issues with the boathouse. Normally, I would check to see what happened last summer because we had the COVID. We had no issues last summer. But going forward, we would want to clarify with the police chief that they were continuing to do some of the work that they said put forward they were going to do two or three years ago.
Yes, we can get some feedback. And what I would just, it's a good general reminder because we do have a couple new, some newer, the blended berry is new. But just a reminder that we do rely very heavily on the feedback that we get from our departments, whether it's police or, you know, the health department, as we're hearing about how places operate. That very much goes into our decisions as we move forward with these licenses. So a good reminder. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
All those in favor by roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great. Next, we have discussion and vote on town manager employment agreement. So this board met earlier tonight in executive session. That was really the culmination of several months of work on this. We had a subcommittee of Nancy Taylor and Doug Jones, who worked with Town Council and with the town manager, and went back and forth over several important terms of the town manager's employment contract, which is set to expire this year. And the, excuse me, the ultimate product was a draft that this board received and took a look at this evening. And I will just point out, or Nancy and Doug, do you want to point out the highlights? I can do that, whatever you'd like to do. Doug, do you want to point out what you did earlier?
Sure. So it's a three-year contract that will be starting in November of two thousand twenty-one. Some of the things that are changes is there was a, in the past, a COLA for the contract that was tied into the COLA for other municipal employees. We have removed that from this contract and instead are putting in some specific goals. And any increases in the next three years will be decision based on the, by the board, following up upon completion of goals that are being set, put forward. We are increasing the car allowance from five hundred to six hundred dollars. And we are.
Month?
A month. We are increasing the deferred compensation of the pension from five percent to six percent and increasing the, adding in a life insurance policy at the rate of two thousand dollars for in total increases of about four to five thousand dollars for this upcoming contract. And we're very pleased with the way this has worked out and are pushing forward to make sure that we have some very specific goals as part of the contract. And I think the plan is that the board will set up a subcommittee to establish those goals, including a revamping our evaluation process of the town manager to be completed in November of this year.
Great. Thank you, Doug. And Nancy, anything to add to that summary?
I was just looking at the sick days, the sick day buyback changed from three thousand to four thousand. We did add, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the Friday after Thanksgiving is a holiday that was not in the previous contract.
And that has historically been, I think, for the town, yeah, for the town employees in general. So cleaning that up.
It was just never listed. And so we wanted to be more specific about that. We also made clear the fact that the town will provide and maintain a town owned phone. I don't believe that was in the previous contracts. And I think that's it. I think we got it all.
Great. And and really, just so the public understands, the goal here, and I think this process worked really well, was to allow, you know, two members of this board to kind of really dig into the last contract, update it a bit, to make it a little bit more appropriate, and to think long and hard about whether we were structuring the contract in a way that, you know, really pointed to the things that we see as a board that we want to get done. So rather than kind of the general job description, in this contract, which is different, is to really, as Doug was noting, highlight specific tasks to be achieved. And they're not kind of broad, you know, keep the town fiscally, you know, viable, but very specific to tasks that we would like to see. And then, you know, that subcommittee, should we put it together, will review those tasks and update them accordingly. So that is where we are at. And that is the draft that the board reviewed at length. And so if there's any further, no further discussion, I would ask for a vote on that contract.
I guess maybe just to add what the current status of the four goals we have set for pre now November. And that was to implement the online permitting system, get rid of the turbines, dispose of the turbines correctly, get a project manager for the sandwich fire station, and to create and implement a performance evaluation for the department heads.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Just a comment that's not related actually to Mr. Sussa's contract, but something that came up at the assembly meeting this week was that the county commissioners have proposed to hire an in-house project manager that will manage multiple projects and avoid having to hire individual project managers for each project. So I just thought that was an interesting comment to make at that time, something we might consider later, but that's what they're doing.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion on this issue?
I might, maybe I should mention that this contract will be a public document. So anybody that wants to take a look at the details, certainly will have that opportunity. I move that we, that we approve the drafted contract for the town manager.
Okay. Okay, I have a second. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you, Nancy and Doug, for your assistance on this. Thank you, Julian. Okay, next, we have approval of minutes for public session, December twenty-one, twenty twenty. Did anyone see any issues?
No, I reviewed them. And I'll move to approve and release these for public access. This is the minutes of Monday, December twenty-first, twenty twenty.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you. Individual suckman reports. Yes, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Just a report coming back from the meeting with the Steamship Authority Short Term Traffic Mitigation Committee. They've actually asked that I request that this board send a letter to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation looking into increased signage and or speed limit changes on Woods Hole Road as one item. And the second is to ask if they would send additional weight checks for trucks heading down to Woods Hole to make sure that they are within the weight limits. I've heard back from the Steamship Authority, certainly on the signage and speed limit changes, they would love to add their request, a letter of request to the Mass DOT also.
Great, thank you.
We can vote that tonight or whether we need to put as agenda item.
My guess is we have to put it on as an agenda item.
Yeah.
But we can do that for the fifth so that we can address it in as quickly as possible.
I did also want to say, I did talk to Ed DeWitt, who is on the Traffic Management Committee, and he felt very comfortable with handling this on our own without having to go to them to have them check it out and then report back to us.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. So, Mr. Sussa, if we can make sure we put that on the agenda for the April fifth meeting?
And potentially provide us with a draft so we can review it?
Yes. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Doug Brown?
I also had a Steamship related meeting with the Long Range Planning Task Force, where we actually had a presentation from Ed DeWitt and the Transportation Management Committee's assessment of current status and potential improvement options. And they also made a suggestion to the Steamship Authority to consider applying for grants to do planning studies to consider whether or not a new Bedford freight service would be optimal, or whether there's improvements in efficiencies that can be achieved with the Falmouth delivery system. So it was a little bit coolly received at first, but they did warm up and ask some questions and showed a pretty genuine interest in considering it. Also, during that same timeframe, the Marx Building Committee was meeting, and they've had a chance now to review the plans and have raised concern. I got an email from them afterwards. I didn't attend the meeting because I was in the task force meeting, but they said they, they would, they took a vote to advise the select board to recommend that the architect consider ways to deliver the plumbing and electrical and mechanical leads to the second floor of the building because currently they're not in the plans and not really in the budget. So we'll have to think about that if we want to maybe supplement the budget to, just to make future use of that second floor possible. So that's a vote by them to send to us. And we'll have to follow up on that with another discussion at a later meeting, I guess.
Great, thank you. Oh, anything else? I'm going to go to Sam. Anything else, Doug Brown?
Just the assembly meeting, what was, now, go ahead. There's nothing really consequential happened there.
Thank you. Sam?
I just attended the annual meeting of the Friends of Knopscott Light Board and and their advisors, advisory board members. The house has been renovated, but it does not have an occupancy commit, permit. The town has basically contributed to two thirds of that whole renovation, both the light tower and the house itself. But handicapped accessibility needs to be addressed. The site work has not been done and needs to be carried out. There's going to have to be another Title V septic system put in and some parking lot areas created. And so they're at a point where they're waiting for additional fundraising success. So that's kind of the status. And so the town has invested quite a bit in helping to bring this property up to snuff. But we're short of getting there. And it's, you know, the ball really is in the court of the Friends of Knopscott Light Board to raise those funds and get us to the point where we have a nice museum and a great, you know, public park, if you will, and education center as well. So that's kind of the status of the meetings at this point. We're just a little bit short of getting it, getting that ball across the goal.
Great, thanks. But an enormous amount of progress if we think about where we were just a short. So.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, the the building and the tower are stabilized now, so there's not a question of that. And it's, you know, the heating and ventilating system is all brand new. It's, how much short? It depends on how much, how good a museum you want and some of those issues. So.
I was thinking of the septic system. That's probably more important.
Oh, you're absolutely. That's critical, isn't it? So, well, I don't know how much a septic system would cost. You're in a better position to answer that question. But they have a cash reserve right now of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, it's probably enough to go there, but they don't want to burn all that up in case there. Um, and uh, you know, it's probably enough to go there, but they, they don't want to burn all that up in case there are other more critical investments that have to be made. But they're pretty tight managers. It's an excellent a group of people that are staying on top of this. And of course, COVID-19 kind of like everybody else is going to set people back. So uh, it's going to, it's going to take a little bit more time to rally everything and then get it across the goal line.
So we should keep an eye out for emails from them looking for a little help, huh?
Everybody should, but but everybody should be recognizing how important a landmark that is for Falmouth.
It sure is.
It's over 100 years old and uh, it's a place that everybody remembers when they come to Falmouth.
Yep.
Definitely. Um, so um, what I would just for tonight, I just want to give a preview um, as an announcement for a future um strategic planning. I just wanted to kind of tie in. We had um, our presentation from Charter Review Committee um, at our last meeting. And, you know, obviously they had presented a lot um of information and we've gotten sort of just really a lot out of that process. Um, and so some of those last present, you know, some of those sort of that last subject matter that was presented to us. Um, I was speaking with Julian and Peter, and it really makes sense for that to those, some of those things to be things that we talk about as strategic planning. They're, they're kind of better suited for that format of really being able to um, kind of discuss some of those broader issues that are not just about changing language to be gender neutral, but really more around the issue of kind of how we operate as a town government. And so um, I just want to sort of put it out there for this board that um, as we kind of get ready to think about our strategic planning in the the summer months, which aren't that far away, um, that we will have some of those recommendations from Charter Review be part of the subject matter that we review, really think about, um, and and have some feedback on. Um, because they are really well suited for that type of discussion. Um, so I just wanted to let this board just kind of start to think about that um, as we get ready to set those strategic, um, you know, the agenda for our strategic review. Um, and anybody else, Nancy? Great. And Town Managers Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I was pleased to join uh, Doug Brown at that Steamship Long Range Task Force as well. Um, that's a group that's making a lot of headway and uh, uh, meeting regularly. And also to join Sam at the uh, annual meeting of Friends of Knobsko Light and uh, uh, was pleased to extend a thank you on behalf of all of us in the town for the extraordinary work that those uh, many volunteers are accomplishing uh, for that treasured, most treasured asset of the town, Knobsko Light. Also, um, uh, this past Thursday and Friday, I've been attending virtual sessions of the Northeast Regional Municipal Management Conference, which has included the usual timely topics on various management related issues. The board's next regular meeting, we've referred to that, is Monday, April 5th. The uh, last Monday before virtual town meeting convenes on the 12th of April. Um, and also we're still seeking to set a follow-up date in time for the recently postponed a joint meeting with the school committee and with town meeting uh, underway soon and the precinct meeting's coming. It's a little bit challenging to uh, try and uh, set a joint meeting date, but if the board members would be uh, available, we'll be working with Diane to try and uh, confirm some potential uh, joint meeting dates to move that important process uh, forward. And I do want to thank the board for your vote on the uh, the matter of my employment agreement. Thank you for that. And I I do want to thank Doug Jones and Nancy Taylor for their uh, fine work in in terms of a commitment of time and resources uh, to develop and work with me on this successor agreement. So I appreciate that very much. And I thank you for it. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you.
And thanks for signing up again. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Motion to adjourn. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Patterson?